I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
African take the roll call, please.
A. M. Postado.
Here.
A. Lewitt.
Here.
D. Mello.
Present.
E. Riss.
Yeah.
M. Russo.
Present.
J. Sanford.
Here.
E. Seitzman.
Here.
Announcement regarding notice according to the Open Public Meetings Act. I would like to advise those present that notice of this regular meeting of the housing authority of the city of Hoboken has been provided to the public in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this regular monthly October's board meeting has been scheduled for Thursday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, was sent to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on Tuesday, October fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, as notification to the general public of said meeting, and sent to the city clerk of Hoboken on Tuesday, October fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, with a copy of the agenda to be posted on a bulletin board in City Hall, the Hoboken Live Public Library and the Hoboken Police Department. I direct the minutes of this meeting to state that I have announced that adequate notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. In addition, I direct that the minutes of this meeting to state the following. As a result of the restrictions established by Executive Order one hundred and seven issued by the governor of New Jersey with respect to the need to limit public gatherings to mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen, this meeting will be conducted exclusively through the use of communications equipment. This procedure is in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash nine point three, which states that the public body shall not be deemed to have violated any provision of the Open Public Meetings Act in conducting the meeting by means of communication or other electronic equipment. In addition, this procedure complies with Article three, section seven of the authority bylaws, which allows for participation in authority meetings by members of the Board of Commissioners by means of telephone conference or similar communications equipment. And then counselor, if you could add your addendum to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. This is Harold Fitzpatrick. In keeping with the Housing Authority's normal practice of affording members of the public the opportunity to comment at monthly board meetings, the Authority will be accepting comment during this meeting in one of three ways. First, comments can be sent by email to hha@myhhaNewJersey.com. That's hha@myhhaNJ.com from now until seven thirty P. M. All timely and legally appropriate comments received by email will be read by an authority representative for all attendees of the meeting to hear. Second, beginning at approximately seven thirty, the Authority will allow access to participants one at a time to comment using their telephone or through Zoom's audio function. Third, if you're participating in the meeting using Zoom from a web browser or smart device, you can submit comment using the Zoom Q and A function, which can be accessed by clicking the Q and A icon at the bottom of your screen. We require that any member of the public who wishes to submit comment using the Q and A function, please limit themselves to a single submission rather than submitting multiple brief comments. In the event that a member of the public submits more than one comment, only the first legally appropriate comment will be read aloud at the meeting. Any comments submitted after seven thirty will be rejected and will not be read aloud at the meeting. In addition, please note that while the Zoom video of this meeting is being streamed through Facebook Live, public comment will not be accepted through Facebook or Facebook Live. Any member of the public watching through Facebook Live who wishes to comment may do so by email, by telephone, or by using the Zoom Q and A function. The email address is, once again, hha@myhhaNJ.com. And the telephone number is six four six five five eight eight six five six with a webinar ID number of four eight five eight eight one eight four nine. Finally, please be advised that the standard practice of the executive director and members of the board is to refrain from engaging in a back and forth discussion during public comment portion of the Authority meetings. However, in light of the ongoing COVID issues, the Authority realizes that limited exceptions to that practice may be necessary. On behalf of the Authority, I thank you in advance for your patience and understanding. At this time, in order to allow more time for members of the public to submit comment in advance of seven thirty, I recommend that the board consider adopting a resolution to reorder the agenda to allow the executive director to present his report at this time.
I make a motion to adopt said resolution. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
All right.
All right. So if we could move on to the executive director's report then, please.
Is there a reason why we have to do that every week and we just can't make the agenda accordingly? Why don't we just draft the agenda?
You could, Commissioner. The only constraint there is that the agenda is actually dictated in the bylaws. And we were trying to avoid changing the bylaws.
Got it. Thank you.
It hasn't been a problem so far. If you want to consider that, I'll be glad to address it.
Second question, when are we going to meet back in person?
Yeah, my colleague Matthew and I were talking about that today. There's been nothing done to require that we meet in actual person. And it's, at this point, up to the board to consider whether or not you would go back to actual meetings and stop totally meeting virtually. The problem there is you'd need to tell us somewhat in advance so we could get set for it, and we would have to make sure that we would have an appropriate room.
So, okay. So I guess we could talk about that in new business?
Sure, you can talk about it whenever the board wants to talk about it, but definitely it's something you can talk about at some point tonight. Sure.
All right. So on to the executive director's report, please.
Thank you. We had a busy subcommittee month, and I think we're going to have even busier subcommittee month next month. We've got a lot going on. I think over the next few months, we're going to be busy on those levels. The Security Committee met on September twenty-eighth with a follow-up meeting with the Hoboken Police Department scheduled. We tried to schedule before this meeting, and we just couldn't get ourselves and the HPD together on the schedule, so we're going to revisit that. And the Security Committee is going to sit down separately with the Hoboken Police Department. The Committee also went to the Project Policing Project Rocket meeting held on October seventh, which is the Hoboken Police Department's community policing effort, which is really exciting and going well. We're real proud of what the police department are doing with us and the groups they're pulling together. The Finance Committee didn't meet, but we do need a meeting before the November Board. We'd like to review the projected voucher availability for two thousand and twenty-two particularly, and go through with the committee on where the voucher program stands and what might be available in the coming year. I am suggesting November fourth at five o'clock. We can either confirm or not on that later. That's just a suggestion.
So we don't, we don't have the information, answers to the questions from three months ago?
Not directly, Commissioner. There's, there's some, there's some nuance to it about how many vouchers might come back or might not come back. What HUD's going to tell us about, about funding for the next fiscal year? And I would really like the opportunity to have our fee accountant along with our housing choice voucher folks really get exactly what the pluses and minuses are.
Got it. Thank you.
Somebody, somebody was interrupting and talking, and I missed the last part of what you said, Mark. I heard some, there's somebody that was popping in. I don't know where. Sorry about that.
Okay, if I remember right, it was, it was really just that I would like to have the Finance Committee meet with our fee accountants and stay able to really understand the nuances of what we're, what we can project as availability on housing choice vouchers next year. Okay. Um. The Resident Services Committee met on October eleventh. We have another meeting scheduled for October twenty-fifth. And I think that was a good and lively meeting. A lot got accomplished. And either now I touch on some of those topics in my report, and I don't know whether Barbara or Erica would like to comment on that now.
Erica. Okay, so yeah, so we met on the eleventh. We had a a really lively meeting. We tried to look at it holistically. And before we can look at servicing residents holistically, we have to get the most important thing is, we all agreed, is input. So we're coming up with the survey, and we're also working with the security team to come up with the survey that hopefully we will be out to residents by mid, the latest mid-November, as well as planning some events for the holiday season.
All right. Thank you. I think there's a few more things in my report that I touch upon as well, but I think it was a great meeting. I'm excited about the survey. And thanks to you guys for your leadership on that. I think that's going to be crucial for us. You'll hear more about that as we, as we pull it together. The Admissions and Continued Occupancy Policy Committee met back on September thirteenth, a new meeting, next meeting scheduled on October nineteenth. I think we took a good look at a number of our policies, our eviction policies, our one-strike policies, and had some suggestions for the attorneys to come back with some preliminary drafts to take a look at and do some, do some modifications and some strengthening of that. Any other comments from those subcommittee members?
Just that I, I think they're past their deadline already, aren't they?
No, we, our deadline is next week. Oh, yeah, right, right.
I was, for the inside joke was I was pushing the attorneys to make sure they reported back to us as fast as possible. So that's where that comes from.
Yeah, you don't want to faint in the middle of the meeting. So October nineteenth is our deadline on that.
Yeah, Matthew's the one working on that, folks, but I talked to him about it today, and he told me that he was going to have his draft before the meeting next Tuesday.
He's on the ball. He's on the ball. Thank you for that, Harold.
And that's what I like to see.
Just as a remnant of Hurricane Ida's great rains, we had a few weeks back, we're pretty well cleaned up. The only outstanding issue we really have are the Harrison Gardens parking lot gates that we've determined there is a problem underground with our wiring system there. We're going to have to do some excavation to fix that issue. So we've got a proposal coming in from a contractor for that. So we should be making some progress on that over the next month. Just as a side.
What's the additional cost of the excavation?
We don't know yet. That's why we need to get some quotes on it and see what we've got.
Does it make, does it make sense to, if it's an, if it's an additional added cost to go through with that project?
Well, I think the Harrison parking gates are important, and I think we want to keep them operating.
What? Is, is, is the, because I saw on the, we spent a lot of money on the Fox Hill gates? And are those, are those operating?
Yeah, we've got a problem with one gate at, at the side of the building. We do believe we found somebody that's been tampering with that gate. So we're having somebody come on out to fix them and deal with this, this tamper.
Yeah, this is, this is where, this is where it's kind of getting to my point. I live right across the street, and I've noticed since you guys have fixed Fox Hill, neither one of them were closed. So like today, I'll tell you the exact example, the entire day today, both gates were wide open. So I don't, I wouldn't understand what the point would be to spend all this money if the gates are not going to be closed, and then if they are closed and then someone tampers with them, you know, what are, what are we doing? So if the Harrison is like, we're talking a lot of money here to excavate, maybe we step back and say, hey, maybe this doesn't make sense. Let's look at something else. Maybe a, some type of other gate option. I don't, I don't know, but just, just a thought. And please keep me updated on the Fox Hill.
That's, that's, because we will get those working, because that's important to Fox Hill as well and the residents there. We will be starting. It's been a long time since we've had regular executive director meet and greets. I'm going to be starting those on a Zoom basis over the next month. This is another thing that came out of not only the Resident Services Committee, but we've been talking about with staff here. So we're going to start our regular meet and greets with the executive director again. We haven't been having them since the pandemic, and I've really missed them. And it's time that we got that, got that started again. We're going to start on Zoom and see how the rest of the pandemic issues come along, and if we can manage to have a manageable presence in person, we will. The big news this month, and something that the staff has put many, many hours into again, is this Hoboken Housing, Hoboken Housing Forward planning for rehabilitation and redevelopment. As many of you know, we had our interactive design process happening on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth and October first. So we had a very, very busy month in that regard. We had a few comments just before the meeting on them. Yes, we would have liked to have seen better attendance without a doubt. But even with that, I think we've made a lot of progress with a lot of different residents and community members that showed up. We had a very active sessions, and, and I think we had a lot of good input that's going to wind up going into our plan. So we continue to work. I'll mention a little more about that in a second. We continue to work with our enterprise community partners, technical assistants. And by the way, Councilman Russo, they have also recommended that we get a little more bandwidth here at Central Office on public relations and, and the ability to handle all the intake that's coming in here. I think with this project particularly, what we've seen is a real uptick in, in the business that's going on here and the communication challenges we're having, and they agree with that. So that's how early got into our budget for next year also. So they're great. They're a group that works with housing authorities throughout the country. So they're professionals that have a real good intake in being able to compare us to other organizations and to be able to drill down into our operations and make commendate, make comments, make recommendations on how we should change and how we should approach not only what we're doing now, but what's going to happen to us as we change, and how is that going to change our business model? So we're doing a lot of work there. That was the group that presented to you at the special meetings in September. So they did have those board trainings. They focused on regulatory issues, frameworks for financing. And they are slated to continue their staff training with us. We're going to have a two-day procurement staff training in November with the Enterprise Group. They're great people. Our planning group, as we said, did the, did the interactive design workshop with us. We also had stakeholder meetings during those, during that period. We met with first responders, police, fire department, emergency response folks to talk about what their concerns would be with the redevelopment renovation of the Hoboken Housing Authority. We met with infrastructure professionals, sewer, water, electricity, what their concerns are, what their systems are like, what they've got in the hopper for improvements for the future, so that can be folded into our plan. We met with the clergy during that time to see what their take was on what the spiritual needs would be for the Hoboken Housing Authority community, which was a very productive meeting. We also met with the Rab Board and the renovation redevelopment Subcommittee. On the very last day, we showed design proposals, very preliminary design proposals. There's still a lot of talking to be done, folks. There's still a lot of road to travel here before our final plans are in place. But we showed the first iteration of those. Folks got a chance to address those, got a chance to put their input. Much valuable feedback was obtained, and we'll continue to evolve those plans as we get input from you, from the residents, from the rest of the community. Our next large meeting is a resident meeting that we were calling at the, at the design workshop, our October meeting. Unfortunately, we couldn't have it in October. We had to push it over right now to November ninth. So we're planning on having it on December ninth at five thirty P. M. Right now, we're looking at the Boys and Girls Club Gymnasium, because it's going to get cold out there. So that's our next big meeting with the community. We are, we are, I'm going to be requesting a special board meeting in November to bring the entire board up to speed on where we are as well. By the time we have that meeting, we'll have had another resident meeting to show them where the plans are developed, what the ideas are, get more input from them, but be able to come back to the board with some more, I think, um, more detailed proposals, proposal A, proposal B, proposal C. Let's take a look at these. What do you think about this proposal? What do you think about that, that way? What are the financial implications of each? So I'm suggesting maybe a special board meeting right about November sixteenth, that we have the planners, and we do an in-depth presentation to the board, and of course, the community would be invited to that meeting as well, and to be able to see where we are in that planning process into November sixteenth. Our goal is continues to have a realistic and financially viable plan to move ahead with by the end of two thousand and twenty-one, very beginning of two thousand and twenty-two, first quarter at the latest, so we can be at the gate and ready to start looking for our first level of financing. One of the things we're spending a lot of time on is the avail, is the possibility and the actuality of a real plan. What are the barriers we need to knock down ahead of time? What are the things that might stop this plan so we can address them now so it doesn't get stopped? It's important that we be realistic and be ready to go out the gate. Having said all that, from you all, any other comments you'd like to make about our, our, our process that we just went through, our three-day or our, our November ninth meeting coming up or the special board meeting that we're, that I'm planning for mid-November? I think it'll bring you all up to speed on where we are. A lot of ideas on the table right now.
Director, can I ask a question about whether or not you intend to try to pick that date tonight?
Um, I, I think tonight I was just doing that suggestion, but I would love to have something in stone. If at all possible, do you have concerns about that, Counselor?
No, I am just concerned about the fact that I love to get notices out significantly in advance, and that would require a notice drafting it and discussion about how the meeting would proceed. We could wait, but since we have everybody here, if we have time, that would be my.
Is there a reason why it has to be special and not just at our next meeting?
The next meeting is indeed the eighteenth, two days later than the sixteenth. I think the concern was that there was so much to discuss that we might not do it justice.
Yeah, I think this is my opinion, and I don't mind doing it at a regular meeting. My opinion is we usually have a lot of business at the regular meetings, and, and this is so important to be focused on this. It's going to take some time. It's going to take a number of meetings of time, and that, that was my, that's my opinion. Again, I don't mind having at a regular meeting. We probably won't get out till midnight. But I think to be fresh and take a look at this project and really be able to lay, layer our cards on the table and understand what direction we're going is very important, and Commissioner, that's the only reason.
What they, what are you suggesting, Director?
I was suggesting the sixteenth.
Two days prior.
Yeah, and the confusion or complication there is that because the eleventh is Veterans Day, we have moved our regular meeting from the eleventh, which would have otherwise be the day it would be held on, to the eighteenth. And just to further elucidate what Commissioner Postado asked, my major concern, I mean, I don't care when, how long, or any of that. I just, if we're going to have this special discussion, would want to get notice out to the public in advance, whether it be the sixteenth, eighteenth, or otherwise, so that they know that it's coming.
I mean, I could, I could do the sixteenth.
Me too. Erica Singh as well. She's worked for me.
I'm good. In person.
I'm available.
I'm available.
Well, do you want to talk about the in-person part now?
Yeah, let's do it. I, I do think this is, this type of meeting would be great in person, because a lot of residents have explained that they don't do the, the Zoom stuff. They'd rather come down and see faces and, and, and listen in person, so. I mean, if possible, we can do the presentation in person and film it and put it up online. We, we, you know, like they do with the council meetings, they have everything, you know, it's, it's on Facebook, it's in person, it's on video. I mean, before the pandemic, obviously, is what the council did with that aspect. I would, I would definitely love to see it in person. And if you, if you, if you're a commissioner that doesn't want to be in person, then that's fine. You can, you can chime in via Zoom. I'm sure we can figure out the technology to do that.
Where, where would we suggest to have the in-person? Are we going to rotate? Are we going to keep it kind of one place, largest, largest room available?
I just don't think you can use a senior center. I'm not opposed to in-person, but I would rather do it something like outside at the gym or the multi, like a multipurpose room. But I don't think we should go into a senior.
Yeah. Can we ask if we could use the Hoboken High School auditorium?
Okay, my, my, my concerns though is that, you know, we have a significant senior population, especially when you consider the people that get involved with meetings. And, you know, we're not going to do this loosey-goosey. I mean, I enter a school every day where I get a temperature checked, and I, if I fail it, I have to leave. You know, we all have to wear a mask. There's a lot of protocol and procedures, and we're not going to have a meeting without those protocols and procedures. Then even then, you know, we're not dealing with seniors, and I just, I don't want to preclude a senior from feeling safe to attend a meeting like this. So I don't see how we can do it in person unless we have a simultaneous Zoom going on at the same time. You know. That's a, that's a nonstarter for me if we're not going to have the Zoom going simultaneously.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree with that. I think it's very doable to do that.
I have one question that concerns me under the local public contracts law, which is I don't know how to predict how many people may show up, and I would be really concerned if we had too many people show up in order to accommodate them. So I'm in favor of a bigger room, even if we don't fully occupy it, just to comply with the issue of the sunshine law.
We look into the gymnasium on Sixth Street. I mean, the basketball courts. I know they do testing there during the day, but I, I mean, that I know of. I don't know, Mr. Russo, maybe you know more. Is that being utilized that night?
Yeah, I could. I mean, I know some nights, well, I shouldn't say some nights are being used. I know that the director was willing to open that gym for Project, Project Rocket for two nights a week. So if we could see if we can maybe extend that to a third night for our meeting, I most certainly can make that, that request.
It's a big area, I mean.
I think you just have to ask Leo if it's available that night. I'm sure if it is available, he won't accommodate.
And I'll, I'll show my ignorance. I apologize. That would definitely satisfy our space concern.
Yes.
Well, and the beauty of that was the councilman at the time, the people that were on that committee really made sure that there was retractable doors, so we could always open it up to the air.
The, the, what is wrong with the request? Because the request for that, you would then have to put out chairs. We would have to figure out a way to get the technology in there, Wi-Fi, all that. I'm not sure if it's wired for that. Is, is there an issue with the Hoboken and Aspen? Um, I'm not sure if it's wired for that. I- is, is there an issue with the Hoboken and ask for the Hoboken, uh, Auditorium? Hoboken High School Auditorium?
Um, that's a different entity, but we come from.
You gotta go through an extra set of hoops, but.
You're gonna have to ask the Board of Education.
Part, part of the issue is the, the proximity. You know, if, if we're asking people to go to Jackson Street for a meeting, that's very different than the high school or Stevens or other places.
I agree with Aaron being that our, our amps, the, the majority of the residents are down here. And, you know, I, I do feel that it would be easier if we were to get the space on Jackson Street than that.
To inquire whether it's, it's, um, you know, wired, cause if it is wired, that's, I mean, the chairs are not a big deal.
Now, just to complicate life further. Is this only going to be for this one particular meeting, whether it's a special or it's coupled with the regular? Or is this gonna be going forward for all of our general monthly meetings?
No, I think, I think it should be for this one meeting until things settle down a little bit more. That's my opinion.
And I know, Counselor, one of your concerns earlier on the pandemic is that if we were to go back to say our two twenty-one community room. Um, with a maximum occupancy, um, uh, under the current COVID rules. That the problem would be if it had an occupancy of sixty and sixty-five showed up, who wouldn't be allowed in, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm terrified about. I'd much rather pick a room that's too big and work the other way. I have had some circumstances in the last year and a half where, uh, there's been terrible scrambling at a meeting because there wasn't enough room.
Yeah, so that means we'd need a bigger space.
Um, and I gather the answer to my question earlier was the why don't, would cover it, is that right?
And couldn't we put a registration link to those that would like to attend? So we have a pretty good idea of how many people would attend?
Yeah, we could, we could do that. We could ask people to respond. We can't require that they respond under the Open Public Meetings Act. In my opinion, although I've seen the state in particular violate it, you have to let everybody who wants to come in. And not require that they do any registration in advance. We could ask them to let us know just to give us guidance. But the problem is that once we pick a place, if it's not gonna work, we can't have the meeting. We have to get a new notice out and we're gonna have to pick a new date.
Councilman, is the city council still meeting, uh, via Zoom?
We are, um. Not that I'm happy about it, but, uh, we are.
No, but I just, you know, I don't know, I don't know if it's our place to be the leader on this, you know. I just, you know, we have a, we have a senior population that's a significant amount of our attendees and, you know.
So from, from my perspective, right, I, I've made this suggestion to the city, uh, as well. You know, if you have, as, as, um, Commissioner, uh, has stated, like have this dual. In-person and Zoom capability. I think you have the ability to, to fulfill all the, and again, I'm not an attorney, but. The way I, I see it, I think you have the, the ability to fulfill the, the obligation of the Open Public Meetings Act, uh, either way. So you do a first come, first served basis up to a number and then everybody else will then be required to go online. Uh, and you could even set that up if you, I mean, if you're really getting, you know, fancy here. You could always set up a monitor and a, and a second location. I mean, there's, there's so many different options that we could have, but that could get very. Uh, elaborate, so to speak, you know, so. It, it really all depends on how, how far we wanna go with it, right? Is it, is it that important that we get back in person? Uh, or is it still viable via Zoom, via Zoom? I think bringing some normalcy back is very important. Um, but, but again, I'm just one voice, uh, not only here, but even at the council, so, uh, and I've been overruled many times before.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna respectfully disagree for, for the short term. I just think, you know, it's not quite time yet, but we're, you know, hopefully getting closer. That's my opinion.
I mean, it, listen, if, if we don't. It kinda solves for all the problems that we're talking about, right? Like we just.
That's a big part of why.
And to, uh, Andrew's point, I mean, some of the seniors that just don't participate via Zoom, um, you know, we. We really gotta try to somehow accommodate them, see if there's other residents that are willing to kinda, uh, help them along the, the. The road there to make sure that they could log in and at least watch the meeting, even if they're not participating.
Is there a way, is there a way we could set up, for example, in, in Fox Hill or one of these senior buildings? Uh, in the lobby or in the community room, a TV?
I'm sorry, Andrew, don't they use the community rooms for bingo?
No, no, I, I, yeah, that's what I'm saying, so.
And there's TVs in there.
Why can't we, why can't we connect it for them so that they could watch the Zoom? In the community rooms in their buildings. I don't think that would take much.
Maybe not even that elaborate, you know, I mean, the one thing that I know schools have gotten really good access to, we, we now are a one-to-one school. Every kid has a computer. You know, the, if there was federal money that flowed for anything, it was, it was to make people mobile. And I, I gotta imagine that it wouldn't be super hard to get just a, you know, a, a rolling cart of laptops that could be. Lent out like a lending library sort of set up to residents in our different buildings. That's doable.
What, what's the problem with just having them go downstairs and watch the TV, like they're watching, uh, Judge Judy?
Yeah, Judge Judy, really.
Are we counting how many people are in bingo? I'm just saying, though.
You were on a roll till you said Judge Judy there, so, um, I mean, you know, I just, I think if, if, you know. Mr. Ray has brought up bingo. I mean, there, there could be problems. There could be seniors that don't wanna be right next to somebody else with the pandemic still grasping us and, you know.
I don't understand, what's the point about the?
Get some computers, why not get, take advantage of?
What's the bingo? I don't understand what the bingo.
No, because, because we're all sitting here saying how we can't, we shouldn't be gathering in, in the, um. Community rooms, right? But we're opening the community rooms. I'm sorry, my kids are here. Hold on one second.
That's why I'm in a truck.
So sorry, this is the problem with the whole Zoom thing, when you're doing it from home and have kids.
I hear you.
So, um, the, so my, my thought is it's not to say anything against what they're doing. I'm glad they're doing something. They need it. They need to gather, but I'm saying if, if they're able to use the community room for the bingo, are they following the protocols? I mean, is any, any temperatures? Is anybody?
Ah, good point.
Yeah.
I would address that problem by, by putting more protocols on bingo, not by throwing protocols out in other scenarios.
Yeah, it took me a little while to understand what the Commissioner was getting at, but you're absolutely right, Commissioner Reyes, and that's the first I've heard. That we're conducting bingo and I, I will wanna ask the same question you just did. Are we following? The protocols that we're applying for other community room use?
And I, I believe that the, uh, the idea of setting up those TVs to broadcast with, with the appropriate protocols that we've required. Is a good idea. And I think that's a great idea. I, I don't, I, I think we can do that.
Yeah, and that's separate and apart from everything else. The only thing where, I hope we don't get to that point. Councilman Russo and I might debate is whether or not if somebody wants to show up. We can deny them access to the actual meeting room. And I'd like to avoid that ever having to be resolved.
What would be the reason to deny? You're saying if they have a temperature or if they haven't been vaccinated?
No, if we're over capacity, I think I heard the councilman say. That might be possible and, and that made me a little concerned.
Yeah, I mean, uh, the only, the only reason I say that is because it, it's like anything else, right? So prior to the pandemic, you still had fire code restrictions in City Hall, for example. Uh, where five hundred people showed up to a city council meeting and that room does not hold five hundred people. So, um, you know, there are circumstances where inevitably, uh, you will not be able to, uh. Fit as many people that show up at a meeting. It happens.
Well, I will tell you that, I, I don't know what Hoboken does with respect to that, but I will tell you that I've seen cases. That say you have to adjourn the meeting and perhaps even to another date until you find a facility that will accommodate everyone.
Well, we, what we do is we allow them in the, in the hallway, we put the, the outside speakers on, we, we have them. Uh, we have that accessibility in the sense of that they could hear what's going on and if they wanna speak. They are allowed into the room to speak, but then they'll go back out of the room to listen to the rest of the meeting, so. It, it, again, I don't know if that's the right protocol, uh, and I don't know legally, that's.
Well, I, I would never question it, Councilman. I, I just would like to avoid it e- ever happening to us.
Yeah, agree.
So I think we all agree that, uh.
Further on this than, than when we started.
Yeah, we're not gonna get, we're not gonna do in-person meetings for council, for, uh, for meetings. Uh, that's clear. Not yet, but for the special meeting, we're still debating whether or not we should be able to, we can do that? Is that where we're at?
Well, I, I honestly, I'll be honest with you, uh, Commissioner, if we're not gonna be able to do it for our meetings. I don't know if there's really a difference for the special meeting. I just.
Uh, let me add one more thought to this. According to our bylaws at special meetings. And it is contemplated from what I've heard from the director about this special meeting, that it would be open to the public. There would be no closed session. It is still the case that the public has not afforded the opportunity to speak at special meetings. And the purpose of this special meeting, I believe, would be aimed at not getting public comment. Although there may be a future meeting for that purpose, this would be for the planning people. To present issues for discussion with commissioners. I don't know if that makes a difference or not.
I thi- I think it does because, I mean, really, Zoom isn't bad for that, cause it, so if, if the public benefit is to have a good archived copy. More so than watching it live and responding to it live. If it's to have a good archive copy where everybody's audible and you have this presentation of where, where the planning process is at currently. So that we can get future feedback, I think Zoom might be more conducive to having a good archived copy of that. I mean, the couple, couple city meetings that I've attended via Zoom of that type, where they're, where professionals are rolling out something. I almost think have gone better. So I don't think for this purpose, it's necessarily a bad setup.
I think as far as scheduling, if we have this meeting on the sixteenth and then our regular meeting on the eighteenth, the public will have plenty of opportunity to comment on the eighteenth. And we can make a point of saying that.
Yeah, that's a good point. I didn't think of that. That's absolutely a good point.
Alright, so.
I like that.
Do them all on Zoom for the near future? Yeah, it seems to be the consensus. Okay, let's move forward.
Okay, so I, I just wanna confirm. I should be putting together paper to call a special meeting for the sixteenth. Tuesday, the sixteenth of November. Do we wanna call a time? Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think we need seven, so all the board members can attend.
Okay, and then the question is, are we gonna designate a location or are we gonna do it virtually?
Virtually.
Virtually, virtually.
Okay, I'll put a draft of that together and get it to the beginning of next week, Mark, so that we can get this out in advance, so that everybody knows what we're up to. And there will be no closed session that night.
That's correct.
Thank you, Counselor. Right, if we could, uh, you have some more of your executive director report, correct?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Great. Uh, Fox Hill Gardens, our pre-bid, um, meeting was held last week. The bid to do on November fourth on that work over at Fox Hill. Uh, the Security Committee, as I mentioned, did meet on September twenty-eighth with an HPD meeting scheduled to follow up. Um, and at an A C O P meeting, we had an in-depth discussion of our policies and procedures on evictions, including the run-strike policy. And have asked for some modifications there. The next, uh, um, HPD Community Outreach Group Project Rocket, unfortunately. Uh, was, has been scheduled for November eighteenth, which is our next board meeting date. Um, I did mention that to Jacob Belly and he, he said, well, it is what it is. So we'll, we'll just have to catch up with Project Rocket, um, elsewhere. Um, we are still, um, following COVID nineteen restrictions as closely as possible. Uh, the, um, we're not out of the woods on this and, and I personally know somebody that came down with it again fairly recently. Not at the Housing Authority, I was in contact with them, but it's still out there, so, um, we need to be, continue to be careful. Housing for Hoboken will be having a meeting within the next week or so. Um, we wanted to wait until after the, uh, the, uh, interactive design process. So we'll be meeting with them with our planners soon. Um, big one vacancy issues, things are really starting to come together quickly. We're excited. We're gonna be, um, occupying a lot of units over the next thirty to sixty days. We expect all of our senior disabled buildings to be at about ninety-eight percent occupancy by the end of November. Uh, so that's about forty-five days from now. Uh, we're, we're, we're truly on track there. Um, with our total housing stock to be at a ninety-five percent or above by the end of December. Um, so we're on track on all those levels. Uh, Frank and his team have been working well. Uh, as lo- as well as maintenance, as well as our contractor out there. That's working out our forty-two unit project. Um, it's, it's moving along. Uh, we had our latest unit walk-through this past week. Uh, punchless items are being addressed, so we're getting toward the end of that, that project. We expect that about twenty, give or take, probably give a little more than twenty of those forty-two units to be turned over to us in November. Um, with the remainder in early December, so we'll be occupying all those units just as quickly as we can. Um, and we, we then, uh, just a note on that with the last on the opening of our waiting list, they're combined. So now that we've got the waiting list set, which I'll talk about next, we have the population to put into our units. We have the units ready, we're ready to move. We do expect to continue our, our local fifty-five labor force to address our future vacant units and turnover needs. We may, in, in the future, if we come across some bad units, still look at some other contracting help. But right now, we're gonna be leaning on a local fifty-five, uh, group to turn those over. If you'll remember before the elevator project happened, for those of you that have been with us for a while. That system worked very well and we stayed up around a ninety-eight percent occupancy, uh, during that period. Uh, we do have a summary of vacant activities that I attached to my report. Very little happened this month. Um, we've been working on other things, working on getting these units ready. Um, and we expect that big move to happen over the next thirty, between the next thirty and sixty days. Uh, the waiting list, since we talked to you last, has been finalized. Applicants that were not selected have received communication regarding that. Successful applicants that were successfully chosen in the lottery will receive those letters next week. They have already come back with their preferences and been finalized. Um, and at the same time, we'll be processing those, um, and we'll be immediately housing them. Um, as those processes, we've gotta do the whole background check, uh, verification of income, all of that process with them. So we're gonna be starting that over the next week and, uh, and moving right ahead. We expect to occupy units starting in the next two to three weeks to be a little bit repetitive. Um, get that necessary, um, paperwork and qualifications in. Along with that, um, we're expecting to, in addition to that, we're expecting to be addressing our worst five to ten. Uh, transfer, uh, issues, um, so we'll be looking along with those sixty or some over the next month. To be doing five or ten transfers in addition to that, uh, so we're kinda firing on all cylinders.
Director, how many units do we expect to fill by the end of November?
By the end of November, I think.
You have a hundred and ninety-six vacant unions right now, uh, according to your report?
Yeah, we're looking at about sixty there and then about the rest by the end of December.
So, so all hundred and ninety-six, you're saying are gonna be?
Pretty, pretty close, but Frank, you wanna do a nuance on that?
No, yeah, so uh where we are is that by the end of November, we should have the sixty that those are the people that are coming right in. We have those are the ready units. So from the ready units, as we as we fill those, we have about sixty to seventy ready units between. What we're getting from the contractor and what we're gonna, what we've been working on, what Jackie and her team have been working on. So those will be the units that will be immediately occupied in the first next few weeks. Then we're gonna have that geocontin take over some of the other ones. So. By the end of the year, let's say by January, we should be at a hundred units. And then the rest of it will be the final plan to get those last sixty-something to get turned over and then to get then the we will have the people ready and then that'll be the final push.
Out of the, out of the hundred and ninety-six units, how many are ready to go?
One hundred and sixty-nine.
So a hundred and sixty, yeah, hundred and sixty-nine units. How many are ready to go right now?
There's. There's some with minor things, but about seventy, and those will be the first ones to to mention with the transfers and the first.
What is the reason why we don't have? More? Because these these units have been vacant for. Uh, I don't know, uh. Before the elevator project, so we're talking, are we talking almost two years? Is there a reason why these vacant units that are now not available weren't worked on? I mean, we're we're only at like fifty percent. Is that what you're saying?
Of the units that are vacant? Yes, there's about fifty percent that are ready.
So Director, is there a reason why the other fifty percent have not?
Well, a number of them came in through the elevator project. A lot of them came in through the elevator project. If you remember, we had to hold. And a lot of units off for the elevator project. Once that project was done, which is about what ninety days ago. Uh, we got to work on the units because we're finally free to go into those units and work on them. So we're we're approaching completion on on a a large percentage of those. Um, the reason is we had to hold those units out for the elevator project to make sure that we had enough for any possible relocation. And our folks have been working away on them.
How many units did we? Rent out from the relocation? That uh the tenant wound up staying in? And not returning to their original unit?
Um, I don't have that number at my fingertips. I doubt if Frank has it either. We can certainly look that up.
But but there were.
I don't have it. It was a low number. It was a low number.
A low number?
Yeah, I would say less than a third. I'll get I'll get you the exact numbers.
So less than a third of the units that we held for the relocation. They then returned back. That, I mean, they kept.
They they kept their old one. The one that where they stayed, where where they relocated.
Still, I'm still confused why we. We only have fifty percent of the available units ready to go. If we. If we held out all these units, so that means they were ready to to be. To have someone in them because we had to have that availability just in case more people. Chose to do that. That means if no one did get in that unit, that should that unit should still be available. Correct?
Well, if they moved and didn't come back, the unit that they were to have come back yet. Couldn't be worked on until they were allowed to stay where they were. So that became a fresh vacant unit.
Alright, so how many units?
About thirty, sixty days ago.
Out of all the units that were, how many units were kept? That were available for the relocation of the elevators? In total?
I I don't remember, Commissioner. It's been what's since we went over these numbers in detail about six months, we could certainly.
Do you do you have a percentage? Do you have like a percentage that we had two hundred units available and? A hundred people wound up being relocated, like fifty percent or?
No, no, I don't have that at my fingertips tonight.
Yeah, if you could get that in, I'd like to see that information if possible. Uh, this is what I would like to see. How many units were available for the relocation that were, we we, let's say, we assume. Uh, two hundred people were, let's say, we had to by law have two hundred available units. I want to know what the number was, what percentage of those units were used by the relocation. Alright? And then I would like to know the number of how many people. Relocated to a unit and then were never. Positioned back to their original unit. If that's, if that, if you can get me that, all of us, get us, get all of us that, that'd be great.
I'm sure we can.
Cause I'm ju- I'm just a little, I'm a little. I'm a little concerned that all these units have been empty and and w- w- we, you know, we're not doing anything with them.
One of the problems with units staying empty, uh, we weren't able to fix the units until the roofs were replaced. And I don't know how many units had water damage and mold. Uh, but out of the forty-two we're doing now, it might have been a considerable number.
Yeah, and we'll factor that in as we do the report. We'll take a look at those reasons.
Yeah. Please, thank you.
Director, I have a question. So now that um Mr. Lewis brought up the roof situation. I know at the last meeting I did bring up a situation in reference to the Harrison Gardens group, specifically my building, three eleven Harrison. I know that. We did get brand new roofs and unfortunately, when it started raining and Ida, I guess pre- previous to that. The top floors did have damage and they were getting water. In the apartments, whatever came of that, because I know that you guys were supposed to look into it. I sent you the video that I see from from the resident. Um.
Yes, ma'am.
Ever do anything about it?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. We had our architect and the contractor up there immediately that week. Uh, took a look at the issue and it turns out that it is a deteriorated deteriorated parapet walls. Um, that are not up as part of the roof, but the walls under the roof. That when you get a very bad storm, the water actually infiltrates through the wall. And that's where the water was coming from. That's verified by our staff as well as the architect. So we are now getting a proposal to repair those walls. And uh we should have that shortly and we move ahead with those repairs.
So you're saying that they're getting leaks on the walls, right? That's what you're saying, that if through, if it's the wall, it's the roof. But the video I saw, the individual was getting water directly from above.
Oh, yeah, so so water comes in and it flows. Um, anywhere you have a roof leak, particularly with a flat roof system. Oh, man, the 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 leak could be happening on the other side of the building. And then it it flows up through that through underneath the insulation or underneath what's there and. And we've had a number of examples of that here. I think we spent six months at one point. At one at one spot trying to find where that leak came from, and that's been true. I I've run into this many times in my career. It's very hard to find those leaks sometimes, but they did uh find the the source of this fairly quickly once they got up and took a good look. Um, and uh I think we're gonna be able to fix that without a problem.
Thank you for explaining.
Yeah, and we jumped on it right away.
Thank you.
The uh, um. Let's see, where was I? The H M F A are our software. We're now running completely on our software. Um, we did get one glitch that affected our residents. Uh, is that as we transferred over to the new software, that new software had a glitch in being able to produce receipts. For the October payment cycle. Um, so folks couldn't get receipts immediately and we apologize for that. Um, but that is has been fixed and we should have receipts out to everyone next week. Uh, also, people were concerned because they couldn't get the receipts. Again, we're sorry. Um, considering. Moving all of our data over, um, not bad, but again, we understand that that does concern some folks and we'll make sure.
What is, what is the way you communicate that to the entire uh association?
Um, I don't think at this point we have done any mass communication on this topic. Uh, we've had just a few people come in concerned about it, uh, but we haven't done a mass communication on that issue.
Does that, does that warrant a um?
Nixel.
It could.
Nixel?
It could.
You know, I would, I would think that's like, you know. Yeah, just just like clear lines of communication, let people know that they're not gonna get a receipt. This is why. Uh, so everyone's on the same page and they're not worrying about, you know, paper trails and. Not showing that they uh paid.
So we'll we'll get a nixle out on that.
I have a, I have a question in reference to that, the receipts. I know um we've had some residents that we've been working with hopes. As far as the rental assistance through the state as well as the county. And I know that some of them have been approved and when they're approved, they're given a letter stating it's gonna take about. You know, this many weeks for housing to receive a check. Have you guys seen any checks coming in, especially like from the county? I just want to know because we have a relationship with the county. So if haven't seen with some of the residents and I. Would know who they are, I could follow up with them to see where. It is in the process. Like, are you guys in the process of mailing the checks? Where are the checks? I know that we're gonna do that definitely with the with the individuals that we assisted because that's part of our process. But I was just wondering because um I had a resident that I was helping and she was a little worried because. Again, she didn't have the receipt and then she wasn't sure if. Um, county had sent the check that she was, you know, entitled to you guys.
Yeah, Frank Rimmel, you have any viewpoint on that?
Uh, I I could check uh with the cashier and see what checks have come in. I mean, we are getting caught up. Uh, with the rents processing, but then any county checks that come in, I can get a list or if you have a list of. Uh, tenants that you've processed or if you're able to share that or vice versa, um.
And I can ask my advocates to pull up what residents they listed. And um and send you the list of it. Um, I know that we work closely with the manager. The managers have been wonderful with sending us the information. And once they receive the the approval, I then go ahead and forward that to the manager. And to Frank as well as a backup, just to let him know, look, they've been approved. And this is how long it's gonna take. I just want to make sure that we stay on top of it and don't let it just go and then. Three, four months from now, we figure out that these people never. You know, their 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 money was never given to you guys. It's just gonna be harder to fight it than than now.
And and we'll definitely follow up on that because we appreciate Hope's efforts there very much.
I'll be emailing you then, Emo, once I get that. I I can get it for you next week because tomorrow we're not in the office, but. On Mon- we're offsite, but on Monday I can get you like a list of everybody that we've helped.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Very good. Um, I've got good news on the Housing Finance Agency funding. They have approved our change order that we've talked about for. Few months now. Um, so uh we have gotten approval from them to move forward and spend. Uh, essentially all the remaining funds out of that project uh for the benefit of our properties. There's two projects that are gonna be getting started. We've already given the contractor a notice to proceed. Um, he'll be uh renovating the boiler system over at Adams. Um. Can't wait for that. That's gonna take a while. There's this pandemic. There's a sixteen-week wait on the boiler equipment. Um, so the orders are in, but we're gonna get through the winter with the equipment we have. But that will serve us well at Adams Gardens into the future. And again, it's not only the actual boiler, but it's. Excuse me, the ancillary equipment that goes with that boiler. At Andrew Jackson, we're gonna be able to address the outside issues that have hit us very hard on Reac in the past. Um, that are remnants of Hurricane Sandy. For those of you that have seen some of our uh. Our tuck pointing there, some of our retaining walls that are slanted, that have been slanted since Hurricane Sandy. Which are major items. There's gonna have to be excavation. Uh, those walls are gonna have to be completely taken out and rebuilt. Um, and uh the Housing Finance Agency has approved that work, so we're moving forward with that. Um.
What is uh, the, sorry to interrupt, two questions for you. What, how much money was it left over?
Sure. Um, Emo, you got a good figure?
Yeah, it was about one point four million dollars.
So one point four million is now approved for what? What is that? What what can we do with that?
Two projects. They, first of all, it has to be spent either at Adams or Andrew Jackson.
Okay, so.
And it has.
Could we? Could we go ahead and uh? Use some of that money to paint the entire building?
No. It has to be used on Sandy-related items. Uh, this is federal money that came in specifically for Sandy-related, so it has to be used for that. And uh the Housing Finance Agency has been very specific that what we've done here is at the beginning of the project. There's a number of Sandy-related issues that we couldn't afford to do at the beginning of the project. So they they dropped off of our essentially wishlist, more than a wishlist. It was actually a. Um, a a costed-out list of work that we wanted to accomplish. But we couldn't fit it into the budget at the beginning of the project. So these are items that were in those budgets at the beginning of the project. That we now have to address. And I I think they're both important, uh, because our our Reac score suffered greatly from the exterior. Of 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 Andrew Jackson and 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 it's good for the property. Um, we we, you know, it's a major investment here.
And what's, the the second question was on the uh the inspection. Where do we, I don't think we've got an update from when we failed it. Where 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 are we at with the inspection?
They're talking about having HUD's word right now is that they think they're going to reinstitute Reac inspections at the beginning of twenty twenty-two. Um, so we believe that somewhere in the, somewhere in the first half of twenty twenty-two, we'll be getting renewed inspections.
Now, we we brought someone in to kind of give us a a test run on the inspection, right? Didn't we do that before the pandemic?
Correct.
Do we? Or do we fix everything that that person told us to fix?
Well, not every little thing, but we have had um. Uh, uh, some, some very intense meetings with them on strategies. On what to address first, what to address second, what to address third. Uh, this past month, we've had some training sessions with our staff. Uh, all staff and senior staff as well on strategy sessions because a Reac inspection. Um, you you've got to have a strategy. Um, you've got to know what to do first, what to do second. Those items that they take the most points off for. Um, so our efforts are always centered around that strategy. Um, and we've been working intently with that consultant who's been on with us. Taking a look at our own inspection as well as the Reac inspections. Formulating lists of what we're, what we should be doing first, second, and third, and we've got our crews out there addressing those items as we speak.
If we had the inspection tomorrow, do we pass it?
No. We still have work to do.
Can you, can you give us a, can you give us a report on the items that need to be fixed for that?
Um, I think we can from our last inspection reports and take a look. We actually have them stratified. By what we should be doing for second and third. Um, I I think, let's see what we can put together.
Well, you 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 have a plan right now, right?
Yeah.
Cause we're, early twenty twenty-two is around the corner.
That's right.
And we can't fail this, right?
That's right.
So. You should be able to send us like a punch list of of items that that are priority, right?
Yeah, this is 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 hopefully in an understanding format to you, again, understand we've been at this. And we've been in a multitude of meetings on this, digging in and understanding what those items are on those lists and our approach to them. So I I also.
I think, sorry to interrupt, Director, but I I think it's, don't, I wouldn't go overboard and 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 making a new interpretation of it. Whatever working list you have that you're working off of, you can send it here as a report to the Commissioners. And if a Commissioner doesn't understand it, then they can follow up with a request for some deeper understanding.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
But I don't want you to waste your bandwidth on trying to anticipate what form, format this needs to be presented in. For Commissioner to understand it, just get it out there and then if the Commissioner doesn't understand it, the Commissioner can contact you with their questions.
Do do we need to have us, do we need to have like a? I think the answer is no, but just gonna throw it out there, a subcommittee on inspection? So that maybe someone like an Aaron or. Someone could provide outside knowledge or resources to help you with this?
Well, I I we do, we do have a facilities subcommittee, which I'd be glad to report.
I'm always, you know.
But I will, I.
I think Councilman Russo will tell you that I'm always up for. Finding a pre-existing committee to take on a challenge rather than.
Yeah, so, so facilities, facilities would make sense.
Yeah, and we, again, we do have, um, I think professionals on staff as well as professionals from the outside that are. That are very intensely helping us with this.
When's the last time the uh facilities subcommittee met?
It's been a while.
Well, there you go. Maybe we get a, you know, have a meeting with the facilities subcommittee and let's get some uh some. Some, some stuff on a blackboard on what we can help you with in trying to make sure that this thing is is passed because. In my opinion, this is. This is like the number one. Because in my opinion, this is, this is like the number one priority in our association, I would, I would think.
Great, great suggestion. All right.
Very good. Appreciate that. Um, and we'll pull that committee together. Um, let's see, um, our new compactors are underway. Three out of the five have been installed and they're continuing to be installed. Uh, we were still at kind of an impasse on our emergency generator project. Our architect is slowly working with P S and P S E and G and City Code uh to work out the gas supply issues with the generators. Um, so we're, we're still waiting for those approvals from them to move forward with this project. The repairs at the facades of Monroe and Adams uh has had a lot of progress. We did have a pre-construction meeting. We've issued the contractor's notice to proceed. He's putting together his final mobilization plan and should start work very, very soon uh on the facades at Monroe, first Monroe and then Adams. So you're gonna see that work, bricks and mortar, starting out there uh probably in the next couple of weeks. Uh, the structural engineer's full report is due back to us any day now. If you remember, we did have a structural engineer that came in to do a study on all of our buildings. And he's getting very, very close to being done with that report for us. Again, he has come into us and said, your, your buildings are solid. There's nothing to worry about on a structural level, but we are waiting for that full report to come back to us. We continue to thank, and we just said it before, Hopes for their continued work on the COVID rental relief assistance. Um, and HPD for their continued good work. Um, I think with the uh, uh, many other incidents that happened last night, the police were right on target. And I think we all worked together very well. Um, we are looking at a reorganization on our BMW cleaning crew. I'll probably have a full report to you at the next board meeting. Uh, we're gonna be putting that into effect over the next thirty days. Um, we are taking a look and doing a survey of all of our bike racks. Um, again, this was a resident services issue conversation. Uh, we're taking a look at where we have them and where we might, might need additional bike racks. We're also doing um kind of a cleanup of our existing bike racks. We've done this in the past where we sent letters to residents, asked them to deal with their bicycles that may be abandoned out there. Give them a chance to deal with them before we take them away. Um, so we, we're gonna be doing that over the next month as well. Uh, so we expect that by next month, we will have a good um survey of our bike racks, uh what we might need in addition and be able to start moving. Had, they're, they're fairly inexpensive and, and, and uh sometimes you got a poor pad, sometimes not. Um, but we've had some um feedback from residents that bike racks are, are needed and, and from the general public. Uh, we are gonna be doing a, a parking initiative over the next month. Um, we have already done an update on all of our, on all of our residents and the vehicles that are registered with us. Uh, uh, we will be pro- performing some evening sweeps uh to identify the illegally parked cars. Um, and doing some towing over the next couple of weeks. We're gonna be out there in the evening. One of the things our residents and the Resident Service Committee came to us was for us to get out there in the evenings. So we're gonna get out there at night, gonna take, start taking a look at some cars that are clearly parked there illegally. One of the ideas that we've had on the table is, is to do a possible assigned parking space for each of our residents that have a parking sticker, rather than a parking sticker, you park where you want. Uh, we're talking about doing a system where everyone that gets a parking sticker has their own space. Comes with a little cost, um, but there's also a cost to our residents getting home at night, not being able to place a park. So, um, so we're looking at that and we're gonna try to do a plan to put that into motion. Um, we do have those five tenant-based vouchers that folks are still looking for a place. And as I said earlier, on November fourth, I'm proposing a finance committee to go over the status of that for the next year. Um, we continue to have our special Reac team out there working as we spoke, spoken about just a few minutes ago. Um, special emergency preventative repairs are ongoing. Um, and we do have a new cleaning bid request that has been issued uh with a due date um back to us on October twenty-ninth. Uh, field work is done with the twenty twenty audit. Um, we expect to have a result from that probably in December. Uh, the auditor was here last week and left us and will be back to us in December. Um, Mr. Daniel Perez, would you like to mention some things on your resident services report?
Great, thank you, Mr. Reco. Thanks for the opportunity. So it's just gonna be a quick snapshot of some of the events and activities and programs that we had in the past month. Um, thinking, of course, the city of Hoboken, they held the last week in September. Uh, some booster and, and flu vaccine clinics, uh, all of our senior buildings. So really thanking the city of Hoboken for stepping up their flu vaccination as well as the booster shops for those residents that um were interested in getting it. Uh, very thankful to the Hoboken Grace folks. Every year they hold an amazing event, uh, bringing the entire community of Hoboken together to provide uh outreach and support and volunteering services to all of our um agencies and uh nonprofit organizations and churches. And also the Housing Authority also benefits from their efforts. Uh, during this round, they actually painted and beautify our playground fence at the four eleven Marshall Drive location and also the mailbox adjacent to that location. They also freshen up some of our uh fire hydrants with some uh paint. And in additionally, they uh, they also picked up some litter. So really thank Hoboken Grace for that. They do some amazing work uh every single year. And of course, the volunteer is just, you know, phenomenal. Uh, we have entire families that come in and share, you know, a few hours with us in ensuring that our uh community is beautified. Um, we have some upcoming events. I just wanna highlight just a couple of them. Uh, Hopes will be having a family food giveaway on the twenty-first at Mama Johnson, adjacent Mama Johnson Field. And this starts at ten AM in the morning, so of course we'll be sending a Nixle on that, uh letting our families know uh that this uh service is gonna be out there, so that way they can take advantage of the, this free food giveaway. Um, the Hoboken Library is gonna have a breast cancer awareness event on the twenty-third um on the Mama Johnson Field. We'll be sending out more information on that event. And then, of course, uh we'll jump over to uh Hopes is having their Halloween event as well on the twenty-eighth. There's a couple of other events at Christopher Columbus as well. And Fox Hill will be sending more information to those adjacent communities. And um I just wanna touch really quickly on other services. We have been in contact with Urgent Care. Um, they are running an in-person clinic at Fox Hill every Friday, providing screen, various screening services for our seniors that uh have some mobility issues and are unable to get to their doctor. They are, they are actually able to get uh glucose tested as well as blood pressure screenings and other screenings in addition to telehealth where they're able to, with an iPad, visit a doctor on site. And this is every Friday at Fox Hill. Uh, we're hoping to roll out this clinic to all of our senior buildings in the coming uh weeks or so. Uh, so that's it from me, Mr. Reco. Uh, there's of course a few other events and programs, um, but uh it's too soon for the holidays, so we'll share that next month. Thank you.
Holidays, but they're coming fast, so we're all a lot of planning in that regard.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question um for Daniel? I don't know if this is Daniel or Mark, but how many residents are subscribed for our Nixle?
So we send out about nine hundred and twenty-two text messages. Uh, whenever we go out, so we have a hundred, nine hundred and twenty-two registered on our system.
And what percentage is that of our uh total residents?
Oh, wow. I'm so sorry. I wouldn't be able to tell you that. I can go back and check on that. I can get that answer for you.
Is there a way to tell who's a resident and who's not, who signed up for that service?
Oh, that's a good, yeah, that's a good point, too.
Yes, I'll send that.
We can, how we can slice and dice that.
Yeah.
Danny, uh, just, just to add, we had a resident on Facebook ask us if we could have a uh, a dance contest for our residents. And um, and I think it's a great idea, but there's a caveat that all commissioners and the director must participate.
Yeah, participate as a judge.
Not, not, not.
I beat you to the punch.
Michael's gonna take the lead with the dancing.
Move real quick. But seriously, I, I think it's a great idea. I, I, I think our residents would enjoy it, so um, I don't know.
I'm all for it.
I don't know how big or, or small we wanna do that, but uh just an idea that was thrown out there. And I thought I'd make sure you uh, you were aware of it, so.
Yes, I, I, I think that's a great idea. Actually, I've been working with the Hoboken Library and uh we've been pitching some ideas as to uh kind of having, you know, some karaoke nights out of senior buildings as well as some uh, you know, some pastor Mike kind of events over at our courtyard and uh also our Mama Johnson Field. So definitely take that idea, we'll run with it. Hopefully we'll have something for you in the next few weeks.
Nice, thanks, Dan.
Listen, listen, Councilman, I always teach my students not to feed into stereotypes. It's a very negative thing, but there's one stereotype that applies to me that's very true when it comes to dancing, okay?
Danny, I just wanted to um bring to you guys attention. Unfortunately, our Halloween event will not be at the Mama Johnson Field. We were declined use of the Mama Johnson Field today. And as a result, we have asked to see if we can still hold it on Sixth and Jackson in the park there. Um, it's going to be a community event, so we're hoping that, that, you know, that area is, is you know, that we can use the area and that we are able to close the street off because um we did have a number of different things planned for that night. Um, so just hoping, um, we're waiting to hear, hopefully by tomorrow, we should hear from the city.
Were you given a reason for it being rejected?
Well, the reason that I was told was because of the football. They have a football, the football league is going on and there's playoffs going on. And they have had to cancel several um football um practices because of things that housing has had. Like they, they mentioned the redevelopment meetings and so forth. So that was the reason that we were given that we weren't able to use the, the field.
Councilman Russo, would you be able to get um the Commissioner and Director um linked up to see if that field could be the uh, the Mike, Mike Russo sixteen hundred, six hundred Jackson Field there?
I think we could use the field. Our concern is closing off the street. We, we needed the street co- closed off. And obviously, we didn't ask for Jackson because it's an evening event. Jackson is usually more, you know, the traffic, it's, it's rush hour. It's hard to close down Jackson than to close Fourth and Harrison to Fourth and Jackson, which is why we were hoping to use the field. So now that if they, they're gonna allow us to use the Sixth Street, will they allow us to close the street? So we can have the same type of event is going to be.
But there's pretty wide sidewalks up there. Would you need to close the street in that area? There's pretty wide sidewalks up there. Then there's the, the, the kind of um marble or cement, whatever they are, benches.
Yeah, no, no. The way we set it up, the way we set it up is we usually um decorate the entire field inside. We have a pumpkin patch and different games inside. And then this year, we were setting up the outside where we were gonna have obvious food for the children as we always have. And then we were going to have a trunk or treat, but we were gonna have it registered, registered individuals and so forth. So we figured that street would be fine because again, it kind of would not deal with the through traffic through Jackson five and eight o'clock at night.
Harvey, you're talking specifically about Sixth Street?
Sixth Street between, you know, where, right next to, yeah, we would need like from where the
Jubilee Center? Why, why not, why not utilize the fields, the uh Seventh Street and potentially the Plaza?
Yeah.
You could probably set up the Plaza behind the Monroe Center.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I didn't know that we, that would be an option.
I mean, look, at the end of the day, if you're setting up tables for, for like a, a, a trunk or treat type of situation, I don't think mu- many people are gonna, I mean, you're not going till midnight, right? Like, I mean.
No, no, it, it's and then we usually by eight, close it down so that we're out and cleaned up by nine.
That's, you know, that's precisely
That's why we did it the way we did it.
It was one of the two guys in the room. That's exactly why it was done that way. You know, there was, there was modules basically that could all be for a really big event, could all be used at once. And it was gonna be like a two-block public space, so that's, that was, that's what was dreamed up.
Barbara, if you're open to doing it that way, I most certainly could have conversations with the director and, and, and see if we could um, we could close down Seventh Street. And again, if you, if you look at the traffic pattern, right, you could either go uh northbound or west, uh, I'm sorry, uh eastbound or westbound when you come to the, the plaza there, right? So you're not really gonna divert a lot of traffic. They could just simply go around the building. So it might be, it might be doable. I mean, I'm not making any promises, but in my opinion, I think that might be a better setup. Uh, and it'll also kinda add to uh Director, kinda add to the Project Rocket theme of really incorporating our residents with the surrounding community as well. So I, I like that idea a little bit more anyway. So if you're up, if you're up for it, I most certainly will ask to, to try to do that.
Sure, so what I'm gonna do is tomorrow I'm with my director. I will run it past her. I don't think she would have a problem. I mean, of course, it's always a community event. We don't excuse any, um, you know, exclude anyone. So I think she would be up for it, so I'll give you a call then after I speak with her. And then we can see what we have to do on our end, what we have to submit. And then, you know, what, what you would have to do to speak to the director, but I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, Commissioner, if you, if you open it up to the whole community, I think that's one, it's a, it's a beautiful thing for the unity. And I, I wouldn't be shy about saying, you know, if you're a Hoboken resident, you get in. But if you're a Hoboken Housing Authority resident, you get in free of charge. But tack on a little five, ten dollar charge to, you know, the non-Hoboken Housing Authority residents, believe me. I know what the mommies pay and five, ten bucks is nothing, okay? They're gonna, for good activity.
Hopes usually doesn't charge for any event that they're providing to the community, so.
Yeah, either way, Barbara, I, I think it's a great idea. And, and management over at Seven Seventy House really wants to get involved in the community more. I, I think that could be a really fun event and really pull some other uh people who are not necessarily always involved, yeah.
It doesn't even have to be a ticket. It could be like a suggested donation kind of thing, you know.
Do something like that. And um, again, our goal is to build community partners as well as to have our children interact with the rest of the children. And so they, they don't know divide. Children don't, don't know divide. They're that. That's what we're trying to kind of, you know, change and have everybody together and, and enjoy, so.
Hundred percent.
I will be in touch with Michael tomorrow.
One, one quick uh question if I can, Chairman, for Director Reco. Oh, two, two things. One, I noticed that we didn't get the uh, your report till, till five o'clock today. So he- here's my ask, and I don't know what everyone else thinks. I'd love to hear, but I mentioned this in the past. Um, it seems like we spend a lot of time in this meeting. The majority of i- is this Director's report. And a lot of it is just him talking about what's on the report. Uh, and then conversations come up or questions are asked. Is there, is, does it make sense to potentially send this report out, you know, on like Monday to all the commissioners? So we have ample amount of time to review it, uh, write down questions, notes that we have on it. And then post it on the website for all the residents to, to look at and view. And they could do the same thing. They could have questions and about it. Um, and then when we get to the meeting, instead of, you know, the Director just talking about what's on the piece of paper, we're now spending that time or less time fielding questions from commissioners that are, that are pointed right at the items that we need to review or ask. Um, I, I, I think that just would be more efficient and it would give everyone an opportunity specifically to review it in time. Like, I know you're busy, but getting your report at five o'clock, I, I, I think that's, that's not good policy. Cause I didn't look at it, so now I'm coming into the meeting with no idea what you're talking about. I'm not prepared to talk about anything, ask questions maybe to you that I did ask. I could potentially ask you on Monday, and now you can have those things that you're gonna go get for me. You could have had him at today's meeting. So I just, I think there's a lot of wasted time there on, on items that, like the bike racks. Like, all right, we'll read it and like, good, that's cool. Like, th- this thing is, yeah, I got it. Um, just a thought, I don't know what everyone else's opinion is. I know that we haven't done that in the past, but that doesn't mean we can't look at something that maybe make it a little more efficient. But my definite ask is but that doesn't mean we can't look at something that maybe make it a little more efficient. But my definite ask is one thousand percent, I, I specifically, I don't think it's a huge ask to get that. I need that report earlier in the week to look at, review and, and, and write down my stuff so that I could come prepared. Um, and I, I don't think it's that big of, I mean, you got a whole month to like assemble it. Uh, so that's my one thing. My second, and I'll give you a chance, I'll let you like talk, but my second thing is, are we not getting any comments about last night? Uh, cause in my opinion, we just talked about Halloween and bike racks and we, we had a shooting on our campus. Uh, so I'm curious why there's no discussion, uh, report or something in regards to what happened last night. Cause I know our residents are concerned. I'm concerned. I know the police are on it. I know there's an investigation. You know, there's articles already in the, in the media about it. Like, I, I need something from Director Reco to, to kinda talk about, at least what he knows or.
Alright, but, but, okay, with that being said, I, I don't, I don't wanna back and forth on a, on a live, very, very new and fresh police investigation, so.
Yeah, I don't think we, I don't think anybody knows anything that's gonna tip hats or I just, you know, at least mentioning it would be.
But I, I'm like, you know, I, I'm fine with the Director giving a, a brief overview of the status of what happened, but I don't, I don't want this to become some Q and A back and forth about it.
No, of, of course not. And if we need to go to, into a closed session to talk about it, I guess we could do that. But whatever he, whatever our residents, whoever residents are listening, I think it should be touched on.
Actually, do we, do we have our, I know we've in the past, I'm not sure of one of the names that's, do we have a representative from the police force?
The officer that's usually here. Um, I don't see him online.
Yeah, so. I mean, I would really have normally punted.
But that they would be here to give.
Direct representative from the police department.
Yeah, I would, I would have hoped that someone asked them to be on tonight, yeah.
So, um, this, this event happened last night about ten thirty. Uh, both Commissioner Reyes and the Police Department almost simultaneously contacted me. Um, we were working with the police until about two in the morning uh, this morning. Um, and uh, I think it's a sign of how well we can coordinate with the police right now and quickly. I think they did a great job. And uh, uh, you know, they are doing their investigation and I'm not sure I could say much more than that about the situation.
What, what do we need to do? What do we need to do to? What is it that we're not doing that we need to be, in your experience and professional opinion?
I, I really, I think that this is.
Alright, we, we, we.
I, I don't wanna get in some open discussion about.
Alright, so, so then I would recommend, I would recommend, I, I don't know how we do this, but we go into closed session at the end of this so we can get into it. Cause we need to get into.
Not without a, no, no, I, I, I'm gonna vote against that without a representative from the Police Department. I think somebody can get an update in the Security Committee. I just, you know, I think it's, it's.
Alright, so then get, so in the mean, by the time we get to the end, I'm sure we can get somebody on the horn here to give us, so, you know, this is a hot, this is like, it happened last night. It can't wait till next meeting to talk about.
The public safety.
What we're doing.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt real quick just?
Yes, of course.
So let me, let me preface the question by saying, number one, we're not gonna get a lot of information, even if there is information, because it is an active investigation. One, two, what is it that you're truly trying to find out? I, I, I heard your question to say, what is it that we have to do, right? From the authorities' perspective, um, I don't know if any things that we've discussed in the past changed because of last night's incident. Uh, so I don't think there's any new information there. And, and again, I'm not trying to downplay what you're asking, Andrew. I'm just trying to get to a point where we give the answer that you're looking for without really getting into this, questioning what's happening, why is it not, you know, coming to us? Because just in my experience as a Councilman and, and being on this board in years past, we're not gonna get a lot of information because the Police Department's just not gonna give it to us at this point, you know?
So just to, just to, I'm talking more of about uh, attention and macro. Like, I don't care about the specifics of the investigation.
Right.
What I'm caring about is, is almost setting an alarm off right now. That like, the, the, all the telltale signs are leading up to that moment where somebody's gonna get shot and killed in the Housing Authority and it's gonna be on all of our watches. And that's what I'm, the, the shots fired, uh, I think a month and a half ago, two months ago. Shot fired last night, people injured. We're, you see the, the trend. We're getting to that point where someone's gonna die. Like, someone's gonna die in the Housing Authority.
Chairman, may I say something after him?
Yes, yes, of course. Listen, okay, but, but I just wanna say, we have an agenda. This is a public meeting. Yes, a very tragic incident happened last night that our very capable police force is handling. I, I think any further discussions about it, really, we, we have a security committee that they are, it's more than apt place for it to be discussed at further length. To just have an ad hoc um, rudder list.
Agree with you.
Close session.
Wait, so my assistant, so Commissioner Reyes and I and some other people have been trying to look at this, and Barbara, if I'm wrong, correct me please, have been trying to look at this holistically for the last probably what, six, uh, four to six months? Because we understand the, the environment. We understand things could happen and we are, we are certainly working on it. And I think we would like to work on it faster, but I think because the police officers are not here, and unfortunately, it's money. You need a lot more resources. You need to bring in programs to keep these kids busy twenty-four by seven. Where, I mean, it's a lot of wish lists, but we, we do have things and we're working on it. I think we need to get strategized and work together with the Resident Services Committee, with the City Council, with all of the parts and try to come up with concrete solutions. But I don't think anybody on this board is not alarmed or nor do they don't care.
I also want to kind of, Chairman Mello, I, I agree with you. We do have a security committee that I know has been working diligently, Andrew and, and, and Michael and Frank and Mr. Reco along with the Hoboken Police Department. We have been working very diligently and closely with the Police Department to, to address the issues that are happening down here. Um, but it's not fair to the residents when you say you have a security committee that's dealing with it, because you don't let them. Unfortunately, we get on these meetings and we do a brief synopsis of what we did on our, at our meeting, and that's it. The residents don't really know what we are doing to, to address these issues. They hear very little from us, and unfortunately, they hold us accountable for it. Like, okay, so this happened, what are you guys doing about it? Last night was very scary. There was children outside. If you look at the cameras, there was kids, there was families, there was children outside. One of those children could have been shot. This is not, it, it, it's, I, I get where Andrew's coming from, and I also respect what you're saying, Mr. Ruth, um, Mr. Mello, where there's not much that we can say because it is an active investigation and we don't know. We probably know just as much as everybody else knows what's being put on, 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 uh, out in, you know, and, and the media or, or so forth. I mean, we're not getting any specific information. So I just feel that we do have to set some time up to address this in a public meeting with residents that are on the meeting.
Right. But, oh, that's, it's not gonna happen tonight in an odd ad hoc within twenty-four hours of a, as, as serious of a crime as could happen was committed, especially when we don't have our representative of the police force in this meeting. It's just, it's not gonna happen tonight.
I, I, I understand.
I don't want some ad hoc emotional discussion about a live police investigation. I just, I don't feel that's appropriate.
It's not about the emotional. It's not. You're, you're missing the point. It's not about the emotional. At the end of the day, um, Chairman, we live here. I live.
I understand. I, I understand. I only live a couple blocks from where it happened.
This happened in front of my building. This has happened in the last years that I have lived, has happened more this past year than ever before. So there obviously is an issue. There obviously is a problem. And the fact that unfortunately, to me, it seems like you're trying to sweep it under the rug.
I'm not.
But nobody's saying that we have to give um, examples or say exactly what the Police Department, that we're not addressing the Police Department's investigation.
I'm not, I'm not gonna have a rudder list discussion about it.
The fact that there are issues. There are issues because things.
Of course there are. Of course there are. Somebody attempted to kill a person. That's an incredible issue.
Been identifying individuals in the Housing Authority that are consistently doing things here, that opening doors, leaving doors open, hanging out. Is anything being done about that? I'm sorry. I live here. I don't see nothing being done about that. And I'm sorry. This is personal to me. I have three kids that walk in and out of my house every day. And I gotta worry now that when they go outside because these knuckleheads that don't even live here are out there doing god knows what in another city. They come down to retaliate against them and my kid may be shot. No.
I agree.
It's not fair.
I agree fully.
Do need to be addressed.
I agree fully. I agree fully. That's why when we talked about doors and cameras and all sorts of security measures.
We have a security committee and that's where it should be discussed. Now, it needs to be discussed in a.
Here's, and.
We have, we have meetings with agendas, and this is not what is done.
Okay, but also in situations where emergencies occur, then this should have been added to the agenda.
Yeah, Chairman, Chairman Mello.
What was gonna be added to the agenda? What is the action? What is the action that a board would take that is gonna be added to the agenda?
Discussing it. It wouldn't be a problem.
Reach out to the mayor. Are we reaching out to the mayor? Do we, do we, do we have the mayor's full resources at our disposal to look into this matter and come up with, with, with suggestions? That's what, if, if I'm the chairman, Chairman Mello, I hate to do this, but if I'm the chairman of the Hoboken Housing Authority and shots go up last night, my first call this morning is to, is to John Allen.
I didn't think about it until this afternoon when I was at work.
And I have a conversation with them and I report back tonight to the meeting. Here's another example. If, if you, you live at the Sky Club, right? If there were shots in the, in the, in the lobby of the Sky Club last night and tonight was your Board Association meeting, do you think that you would have, the Board President would have even addressed it?
We, we, we had a very serious matter in the last couple of months and it was not.
Guys, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Calm down.
Commissioner.
Wait, calm down.
Very serious situation in this building a few months ago and it was not part of the matter. Yeah.
Huh? Just relax. Everybody relax. Take one breath, everybody, okay? Just.
We, we, we know what Mr. President thought I was about.
I, I think.
What do you, what does that mean?
Time out, guys. Time out.
What is it about? No, 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 don't make comments like that and then I'm not gonna, what is it about, Dave?
Excuse me, you do not have the floor. That's what it's about. You need to be quiet. You need to observe some sort of protocol.
What, what, what is that?
You need to observe some sort of protocol.
I'm not on the ballot for November, so it's not about that. I don't know what you're talking about.
We need to observe some sort of protocol. This is a public meeting.
Don't make rude comments.
This is a public meeting.
So we've accomplished zero in, in the last ten minutes of screaming back and forth. And look, and I get it. I understand it. I've been there many times. I've screamed just as loud as, as Barbara has and you, Andrew, and you, Dave. We've all been there and I, 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 I fully understand that. It's a very emotional issue. It's a scary issue and it's an issue that needs to be addressed very quickly. However, right now, okay, we're going through the Executive Director's report. Andrew, I understand your point that it, it hasn't been discussed as of yet, but I don't think that there's anyone on this board that had zero intention of discussing this at some point during this meeting. I think Chairman Mello is correct in saying we should just have some kind of a, of a decorum and a protocol so that we can discuss those things. Alright? And I'm not saying anyone's right and I'm not saying anyone's wrong, but if we just continue to scream, we'll get zero accomplished.
So what, what are you, as a Councilman, what did you, what are you doing to get the entire city of Hoboken involved to address it?
Andrew, we're not gonna dictate, you're not gonna dictate what the, what the timeline of this meeting is. If you wanna discuss with me what I do, I will most certainly do that at the end of this meeting. I'll stay on this meeting until three o'clock in the morning if you want.
So, so under new business, we could talk about it. Is that what you're saying?
Wait a minute. Let's get through the agenda. Let's do what we need to do and discuss this properly so that there is no screaming and anyone who's listening to the meeting understands what we are doing, what we plan to do and how we're gonna rectify it. Instead of Commissioners screaming at each other.
Well, it, it didn't start as.
If you wanna talk about what we're doing as Commissioners, we'll do that. If you wanna add to the agenda and speak to me about what I'm doing as a Councilman, I will. So let's get through it and we'll talk about it rationally and realistically. But screaming is not gonna get us anywhere.
I, I, I understand that, sure. Okay, but it needs, sometimes you need to address things in a manner so you get someone's attention. And I don't appreciate what Chairman Mello just indicated that he knows what I'm, I'm trying to do. Cause I have no idea what that means. I have no idea what that means. So.
And, and, and the way he came off to you, sometimes you come off to others, Andrew. And we all, and we've all been in that situation.
Great. Me and you can have a couch session on another time. This, let's now jump, okay, fine. We'll talk about this in new business. Let's talk about the uh, the first thing I addressed with the uh, Director's Report. Any comments on that?
Yeah, I have no problem trying to get it over, getting it out too early. I try to keep it as current as possible for this meeting. Um, I would suggest maybe Tuesday during the day would be the best time and uh.
Do you, do you think it's, do you think it's necessary to go through the entire thing or just have it open for questions and comments from the Commissioners?
I'm open to either way. I'm open to just having questions and comments from the Commissioner would certainly take a burden off.
I think there's nothing wrong with going through the entire thing, you know, as a, as a, as a person who presents information to people for a living. If you just give them something to read ahead of time, you're not gonna get nearly as many people actually reading it or paying attention to it as if you presented. And I think it has value during these meetings. A lot of people will not read the report ahead of time, but they still check into these meetings or they, they watch the tape of them after the meetings for the Director to go through the agenda if you want him to do it.
What do you, what are your thoughts about posting it on the website? I, I started.
I, I'm not against it. You know, I also, yeah, I'm not against it.
Okay, so we're gonna post it on the website. It's gonna come Tuesday.
Director, Director, do you feel like you can work that into your workflow? It doesn't sound like the heaviest lift.
No, I, I, I think we, we can, we can adjust.
Alright.
Done.
Alright, let's move on. Alright, so we're done with the Executive Director's Report?
Yes, sir.
Alright, do we have any official reports from committees that weren't covered in the Executive Director's Report? Alright, then we'll move on to, we have no unfinished business, uh, reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. Uh, Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-One. Oh, no, we do the.
Uh, yeah, Chair, we have to do the public portion.
Of course, of course. Alright, so who do we have queued up to speak?
Uh, it is Patricia Waiters.
Alright. Patricia Waiters.
Hi, good evening.
And you have the floor. I'll start the timer now, alright?
Alright, thank you. Um, Andrew, with all due respect, my heart go out to you. And Barbara, you got me sitting here in tears. It's really hard for people to be judgmental. Barbara, you absolutely right. Our people live there. That could have been somebody simply coming out their house and got one of those eight bullets to the head. Okay, I, I also tried to rush down there on to see my kids, begged me not to go. It's sad because just four weeks ago, about six weeks to, two months ago, the same thing happened. And when you take a known disregard to stuff and sweeping under the rug, it's gonna continue to happen. Last night is just an episode of another day waiting for somebody to come down and shoot again. July, it was just this shooting. Here we go in, in October. I guarantee by November or December. And Barbara, you right. I feel bad for you, baby. You have to live there. Our kids have to see this. And this is exactly what happened when you just got the numbers and you got the majority. And this is exactly what happened when you just got the numbers, and you got the majority and put anybody on that board as a commissioner. And I'm so glad that you followed your own law by putting somebody that live in the housing and feel the pain and have the experience like you, Barbara. I really do, and I was pissed off because y'all overlooked me over and over and over again. And yes, we lived in the housing authority since the sixties, my voucher is from the housing authority, and it breaks my heart. It breaks my heart that the way those people are still living, you took a no disregard and no the hellist, don't have nothing to do with me being on the ballot. Because I lost fifteen years straight in elections, so I don't have to election there. I'm a woman about my word and I be about it, fifteen years of denying me to be on that board, I guaranteed I would change housing authority. It wouldn't be no shooting, because I would be down there interacting with my people, I would be down there making sure they have things to do and programs, not wait till something critical happened, and one of our kids are dead, and then you talking about programs. Every program and recreation in this city costs thousands of dollars, you took the fields from our kids, you took everything from them. And then you wonder why there's shooting going on, because you can't relate to the HHA. And it's that shame on all of y'all that overlooked me and put somebody down there thinking that they could do a better job than me as much as experience as I have in this city. And the one thing I'm closing with this, I'm glad you did put it on the table, uh, Andrew. Mr. Recco, I'm asking you again, you gotta come forward, because I'm asking you commissioners to do your due diligence. I don't care who's Mr. Recco's friend, it's about business, it's time for a thorough investigation, and if HUD don't do their due diligence, y'all gotta go over their head if the state gotta step in. Mr. Recco, I got it on his website, I'm screenshotting it and sending it to you guys, he opened up the list, well, relatively put in announcement that he have housing authority availability. It says, apply, you remember in the days Michael Russo, we used to sit outside in chairs, two or three nights to wait on the line. My daughter did that, my daughter took number eight, but she don't have my last name, thank God. My daughter took number eight, Mr. Recco told the people that was in an earlier list that, oh, that didn't count, he's doing another lottery. That was a different lottery from something else, he tried to re-language it, as clear as day, Stevie Wonder could see it, they tampered with the list. And it hurt a lot of people, four thousand people applied, if I took number one through ten, I would have been happy. Only for Mr. Recco to manipulate the list and say, oh, I didn't mean that, I meant this. I'm gonna give you a copy of it, it clearly says apply, and she did it, we was in full compliance, we got up, we applied. Then he sent another letter out stating, oh, I picked the first six hundred and fifty. I don't make this up, I got this in writing from Director Greco. It's time for people to be investigated, I need the prosecutor's office or somebody to come in and see what's going on. And with the money too, Barbara, you right, all of a sudden the machine with the receipts are broke, but people getting eight and nine thousand dollars sent for rent, and it ain't being accounted for, Andrew, I'm glad you awake, look into these things, it's serious. Three people that I be advocating for came to me, eight thousand dollars, and they changed the number on the receipt, and it was paid by the state. And allegedly the manager said, well, it ain't me, it's Mr. Recco, money's is coming in, this is serious. I want you as commissioners, guys, to please do your job, and thank you for your time, Chairman Mello, please. Those three topics that I put on the record tonight, look into it. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Pat, appreciate it, okay, do we have anybody else?
Uh, no more, but there's two emails that I will forward to everyone else, but ask for Adrian Wallens.
Michelle Lassane is on the line, on the thing, I saw her, I think she
But, yeah, but she's not, she didn't request to speak, is she requesting to speak?
I believe so.
Andrew, can you allow Michelle Lassane?
She's here, she's on the sense, and I think that's her.
Okay, she's on.
Hello, yes. Hello?
You're echoing, so do you have your speaker on, is that what's going on there?
Hold on for a second. I'm sorry, you can't hear me, you hear me now?
Yeah, you, you removed the echo, so the floor is yours.
Evening, everyone, I'm glad y'all finally got to this public portion, um, I have, I, I, I have an issue. Um, I, I've been complaining, and I, I'm complaining to my manager, I spoke to Frank, I spoke to Mr. Greco. I know their hands are tied, but you guys have to do something. These young people that get in these apartments, they think that they're privileged, that they can threaten people, that they can, um, do whatever they wanna do, they don't have consideration for others. I have a tenant from hell on top of me, I've been going through hell since this girl moved in. All the noise and stuff, I do, my kids are wearing headphones in the house, I, I have no peace of mind, I have to go outside. I have to go to the store, I am totally outrageously disappointed, distressed, everything, I can't take it no more. I, I complain, I complain, their hands are tied, but y'all have to do something. I have the mother threatening me, they wanna fight, I said to, I said to the police, and I also said to the housing authority. Do y'all really wanna make it a family thing, I hear people fighting, it's ridiculous that I have to result, I'm fifty-five years old. I don't got time to be frightened, but if they want me to, I have no problem whipping nobody behind, but I shouldn't have to resort to that. I should not be intimidated when I'm outside my door, standing outside in the morning, I can't pray outside, I can't do what I wanna do outside, oh, because you don't like it, because you don't understand what I'm praying about. This girl has done so much stuff to me, I have floods in my apartment, okay, I, I, it was rectified. It's still, my ceiling and stuff is still messed up and all for me, which is fine, because I can get somebody to fix that. The problem is, I'm being threatened, this girl is a tenant from hell, I have a, uh, uh, case right now in court with her. Where I tried, it started with her, the noise first in November last year, then it started with her child destroying my AC in February. I said, then she didn't wanna pay, she told housing, she doesn't, um, have money to pay, but I see her buying all these luxury items and stuff. One day I were, I witnessed a transaction, and yes, I was speaking to my cousin, I said, can't pay me my money, but I just seen a transaction took place, so she come downstairs, she wanna get rent ready, tell me kiss up behind, calling me all types of bees and stuff. We were about to get into it, but I, I tried not to, because my daughter was standing there and people was there. Mr. Greco was on the phone at the time, because my cousin had called him. I mean, it got to the point, somebody called the cops, when they came, I said I wanted to file a report. They told, they listened to me, then they went upstairs, they come down with this, oh, oh, she's gonna pay you this and that monthly, it never happened. It's repeatedly, I'm going through with the family and all, I go to housing, I go to the police, they said I have to go to housing. What am I supposed to do that I have an ongoing issue, where y'all gonna wait till I drop dead in my house? With all this issue that's going on with this tenant, y'all have to put something in these bylaws or whatever you's got to do. But these tenants that are nuisance, she has a jacket where she had, where she lived before, the tenant was complaining like hell. And I don't understand how she was able to move in this building on top of me. I, my children wear headphones every day, I said to Mr. Greco and Frank the other day, y'all need to put me up in a hotel. I have no peace of mind in my own house, what kind of, what am I paying rent for, just to be in and out outside? Going to the mall and stuff to get peace of mind, that's not right. Like, something gotta be done, I got a court matter going on, and it's the same bull crap. They believe everything she said, because she got kids, I got kids too, my son works, and he pays rent too. Why is that he don't have no peace in his room, he gotta wear headphones twenty-four seven, that doesn't make no sense at all. Now, y'all got to do something with these youth, young tenants, if they are out doing stuff, and, and they have, keep getting cease and notice, cease and notice, then it's time to take action, these, the director here should not be tied, Frank here should not be tied. Y'all need to grow something into this, if they are nuisance, they got to go. If you can't respect your neighbors, you can't respect others around you in the building where you all live, you're supposed to respect each other's space. And I don't have none of that, I have, everybody else scared to go, I'm not, I don't care about everybody's scare, I'm gonna voice mine, because I'm a sick lady. I don't have to tell everybody, it's not my job to tell all y'all, I'm sick, I go about my day as nothing is wrong. But yous don't know what I go through at the end of the night when I'm sitting in my house. I think I'm just tired of it, like, y'all really gotta do something about these young people, because they're taking over. I was a young parent that has six kids in my house, nobody knew, if anybody tell me about my kids doing something, they ain't got no business, I will handle that. But these kid, these young people are really outrageous, I have people that told me that was my age and older, they scared to death, because they, these young people. They blasting the music, they curse them out, they say something, or anything, this should not be. It's all to respect the elders and respect the disabled and other people in the buildings. So y'all really got to do something about this, my next step is the news media, I'm not playing. Then I'm going to the mayor too, because this has to stop with these young people. I'm sorry that I'm yelling, guys, but I am fed up, what am I to do? Can y'all tell me what am I to do?
All right, Michelle, thank you, I've given you a little extra time, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um.
Carmen Vega is next.
Yeah, we can hear you, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone, I just wanted to touch base on, uh, two different things here, two different matters. Um, I understand about, I understand the young lady that just spoke, one of the sisters that I do know. Um, I think that is, um, fair to her, the situation that is happening, it should be taking hands, I mean, hands on for her to speak and voice her, her voice, because it's, it's mandatory at times. But at the same token, these things have to be investigated. Uh, as far as Barbara, I love her dearly, I love Barbara dearly, she is my go-to girl, if need to get some info. Barbara's always been there for the community, but when she's being pinned to a corner and situations are going on, uh, what, what she mentioned about, I know it cannot be discussed fully, because there is an investigation, I understand that. I understand that as far as investigation, police matters have to be taken care of. If anybody gets arrested, prosecution gets involved, I understand that portion, I understand that. But at the same token, once all this is done and dealt with, and moving forward, what is it that housing is gonna do and take actions, because at the end of the day, you know, you have a mayor that should be accountable for being part of housing authority, be more involved about what's going on. And also, the police officers should have been there tonight to just explain and give in detail, or not even give in detail. At least say that they're looking into it and that they cannot speak in reference to the matter right now, it's understandable, but what's gonna be done moving forward, this is not the first shooting, this is not the second. Throughout the years of thirty-two years that I worked in the prosecutor's office as a victim advocate, I have seen so much action going on and down in housing, this is not the first time, and nothing has been done in the past. Moving forward, what is gonna be done, I mean, cameras are, are there, but what is gonna be done about throwing people that don't live there, or come from other town to hang out there, they should never be there to, to begin with. I remember back in the days, if you would walked around, uh, you would, you would have got scolded at or told, get out of here, you don't live here. You can't walk around this area, I mean, why can't we go back to what it was the norm, what it used to be? And Barbara knows that, and Russo knows, uh, Russo is aware about what I'm talking about, and you as well, Mr. Mellow. So I think that everyone needs to step up as commissioners, everyone, as the public meeting portion has to has to step up, but at the end of the day, Barbara, if nothing, if nothing is being done, you have a community that stand behind you one hundred percent, not fifty, not twenty-five. And if we have to go back to the days that we had to march to City Hall, then let it be. Because our voices are not one, our voices are more than one, and it's louder. Action speaks for itself, and you have a whole community backing you up. I really don't care who likes what I'm saying and what I'm saying, but my situation is, the people are the ones that get you to where you at, if it's not for the people, not many people will have jobs today, if it's not for the people. Okay, so in reality, I know the commissioners don't get paid for, eh, eh, no money whatsoever, but you're there. You decided to get into a position to, to be accountable for what happens today. So please, 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 let's work together, together we will go far. Barbara, I'm sorry to what happened in, in your area, I am sorry that you have to bear witness to what happened, your children, and everybody else's children that are down there. These parents need to come out, don't sit back, take action, take action. This is what's going on, we stopped taking actions, we cannot do this no more, you have to take action. And not only take action, Pat Waiters is very on point with what she said as well, you know, the community is the most important thing. I know people that lived there for many years, and I know their children's children today, so you know what, take action. Barbara, you need us, you make phone calls, we'll make calls, and we'll take action ourselves. So have a good night, I don't mean to yell, but I'm very disturbed about what happened last night, I was not aware of this. And it's very disturbing to know that children and adults and anybody could have been shot. How, what are we, what is going on? We're so, we're so trying to build projects, trying to build housing, build it up or whatever. But what are we doing for the time being, because that's not gonna take place for another ten years, what are we doing today? From this day on, what is it that you commissioners are gonna do, what is Hoboken Mayor's Office gonna to do? And what else is everybody gonna do? Take action, have a good night, and God bless you all, I'll keep you all in my prayer, so action can be taken. Have a good night.
Thank you, Carmen.
All right, is there anybody else?
Uh, there's no one else.
All right, so that's closing the public portion, uh, moving on to agenda item twenty twenty-one dash ten point zero one, a resolution to approve the minutes for the September ninth twenty twenty-one monthly board meeting, I'll make the motion, do I have a second? All right, any questions or concerns? Forget of a vote, please, Director.
Anne Pastado?
Yes.
Hey, Louis?
Yes.
Yes.
He Reyes?
Yes.
And Russo? Jay Sanford?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash ten point zero two, a resolution authorizing the payment of the monthly list of bills for the Hoboken Housing Authority, I'll make the motion, do I have a second? All right, do you have any questions about the list, monthly list of bills?
I've, I've one question, Chairman.
Yes, you have the floor.
Thank you. The transmission was being fixed on a, uh, was fixed on one of the trucks. Do we have any updates on what Councilman Russo talked about at, uh, I think three months ago, four months ago, about what we can do with our fleet? So that it's not, uh, we're not going down this trend of just constantly pouring money into these old vehicles?
I think that, uh, that was last month, and I do believe that, uh, Emo's been, uh, uh, trying to reach out to the city administration. They've been exchanging some messages and trying to get a conference call together, and I think that's where we are right now, right, Emo?
Yeah, I had to reach out to Jennifer Gonzalez to get more information on that, but we haven't confirmed a conference call date. Uh, this vehicle, I will say, is in fairly good shape. Um, it's got really low miles, it's only been driven local, it's been used by our electrician. And it's a, it's a van, it's a cargo van, so we thought, instead of paying twenty-five thousand dollars to buy a new one, it made more sense to pay the five thousand dollars to replace the transmission.
Do you, um, I remember we, I requested, I think a couple of years ago or a year ago about getting an update on each vehicle and the cost, and, and you started to do it, but then stopped, is, is there a way that we can continue to see that? Uh, the cost for each vehicle and, and what year it was, and just looking at the fleet from a cost standpoint?
Let's do, uh, yes, sure, I can, uh, update that schedule, that's my problem.
Cool, all right, thanks.
All right. All right, can we have a vote, please, any other questions? Can we have a vote, please?
Okay, I'm sorry, Anne Pastado?
Yes.
Hey, Louis?
Yes.
You Mellow?
Yes.
He Reyes? And Russo?
Hi.
Jay Sanford?
Yes.
Incitement.
Excuse me, sorry, abstain.
Okay, moving on to resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten point zero three, a resolution to accept the donation of Hoboken Little Free Library Stand. Um, I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do you need contacts for this one? Does everybody know what we're talking about?
Erica, would you like to provide some? I think you've been involved in this project.
Yes, so the little library that's at two-two-one Jackson, right, is doing amazingly well. So we have a Boy Scout is asking to build a new one. And we believe we chose the location close to the, the main office in the grassy area. Is that correct, Mark, Director?
That's correct.
Hoping that would be near the field, the Hope's Building, because the free libraries have been doing very well. It's a great resource for the community, and we're happy and thankful that they decided to add an additional one.
Those have been very successful, and we look forward to the additional one. Be a great addition.
All right, so any other questions about this? Any questions about this?
Vote. Can we vote?
Can I have the vote, please?
Ampastado?
Yes.
Hey, Lewitt?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Hey, Reyes?
Yes.
And Russo?
Hi.
Hey, Sanford?
Yes.
Excitement?
Yes.
And sorry if I was distracted, but I've actually been texting with the Superior Officer on the case of the shooting last night. And he is trying to get Captain Aguirre to join our meeting to give the residents an update. All right.
Yeah.
He also said that I could convey to us exactly what he texted me is that he gives his word that they're working very hard on the investigation level, that every detective he have is, is on this until arrests are made. Uniform patrol, uniform patrol has been increased in the housing authority as well. And that they will be, the police force will be on top of this to keep the residents safe as possible until arrests are made, and we're confident that they will be made. And then again, he is trying to get Captain Aguirre to join our meeting. Okay? All right, um. Do we have any other new business beyond that?
Yes, Chairman, I do have some new business.
All right, Commissioner Sanford, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have the floor. There was a recent article about our housing authority that I would like to address, and I prepared a statement, which I am now going to read into the record.
All right, go ahead.
The article was entitled, Why Doesn't Hoboken's Housing Authority Board Look Like Its Residents? The answer is quite simple: public corruption. The public corruption of Hoboken city officials and their wealthy developer puppeteers is depressingly rampant. For example, Hoboken developer Frank Rea was convicted in federal court for his involvement in a cash-for-vote scheme that paid HHA residents for their votes. Mr. Rea abused housing authority residents. I agree with HHA residents that actions speak volumes, which is why securing thousands of medical face masks to protect every man, woman, and child living at the HHA is one of the many costly actions I took to protect people. So when I see corrupt politicians and their wealthy handlers selling out HHA residents for thousands of dollars, it bothers me. Questions are important. For example, what did convicted felon Frank Rea expect in return from Council President Ramos and Council Member De Fusco when giving them thousands of dollars? Maybe Rea hoped to get the same deal that Councilmember Falco and HHA Commissioner Impastado were peddling to the other developers. After all, when developers gave thousands of dollars to Falco and Impastado, they definitely got their money's worth. Despite multiple warnings to the Hoboken City Council, led by Falco, installed an executive vice president of Iron State upon the HHA board. The conflict of interest was so obvious that HUD ordered the commissioner's removal from the board. Commissioner Impastado laments that he and I are not on the same page, and that I don't ask enough questions. Here's a question. Why does convicted felon Frank Rea still receive checks from this housing authority? Two years ago, I brought this matter up to Commissioner Impastado and the Hoboken City Council. I created the Election Integrity Pledge, which called on candidates to refuse developer money. But as the elect records show, Impastado and Falco have already taken money from developers. Andrew, are you here to protect Frank Rea's money? Because I'm not on that page. Maybe Impastado can help us to understand why his basketball business charity operates out of four seventeen Newark Street, which is owned by Iron State Development. Now, while we're on the subject of basketball, why aren't Impastado and Falco trying to steal funding from the Boys and Girls Club? Or can Impastado please tell us why he felt the need to take funding away from the Hoboken YMCA? Is it because the majority of public housing vouchers already go to developers, like Applied Housing in Iron State? You know, Andrew's commercial space landlord? What page are we on? Beefing with the Boys and Girls Club, defunding the YMCA? Tell you what. Before Andrew has a chance to shut down a little kid's lemonade stand, I call for his immediate resignation from the board. And I call on the Hoboken City Council to appoint either Carmen Vega or Patricia Waiters to replace Impastado. Because neither of them is paid by developers for their service to our Hoboken community. That's my statement. I stand by it, and I'm ready to defend it. Andrew, you need to resign from this board.
Chairman Mello, now that you, you just let that soliloquy happen.
I will, I will, I will let you, I will let you respond in an order.
No, no, it doesn't even warrant a response, and I'll tell you why. We had two shots fired in the Hoboken Housing Authority last night, and this, this guy who, who missed three straight meetings on his record. I've never missed a meeting. Wants to go on this soliloquy about nonsense that makes absolutely no sense. And you're gonna sit there and allow it? You allowed him to talk more about craziness, like he's on drugs, than me to talk about and defend what our actions as an entity are about people dying in the housing authority? So the questions are redirected to you, sir. And I want you to, I want to answer on what you meant.
This guy spent thousands of dollars to save people's lives.
We're not, we're not, we're not doing this. We're not doing this.
You just allowed it. You just allowed it, Chairman Mello.
Well, what can I tell you? I guess I was a little distracted. Tried to get a representative of the police force onto our meeting, which we now have, so I think we're going to move on to that.
Yeah, I texted you, Andrew, and I sent, I sent Aguirre the link, so you're welcome.
All right, and, and.
Just, why would you allow someone to go on a soliloquy like that in new business? Make you go.
I was making sure that the representative of our police force had promoted you.
This guy doesn't even, he, he doesn't even have his camera on.
Order, nobody is speaking but myself, and now I am handing the floor over to Captain Aguirre. Thank you for joining us, Captain. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. I'm sorry for the delay. There must have been a mix-up with our normal liaison. I did speak with Captain Jacki Belli, who was heading the investigation. I believe some information was relayed already. I was on as an attendee. I did hear that you were advised that we are increasing our patrols in, in the housing area. As to the incident that did occur last night, it's currently under investigation. Actively, as we speak, we had officers down there, detectives down there, scanning the area again, looking for more evidence. What I am at liberty to tell you is that there were multiple actors, multiple firearms used, and multiple shots fired. Obviously, that's already been known. There's not much more I can say about the ongoing investigation other than that, that it is ongoing. If there's any other questions that you have, I might be able to answer. Other than that, the, the information that was relayed to this committee already is up to date.
Captain Aguilar, I just want to say that I know I was frustrated before with, with what happened, but as far as the response from the Hoboken Police Department and as well as the other entities who came on site, because I did see other police departments as well down here, I want to say, and I think I expressed this to Erica, because Erica and I have been in communication all day, is that you guys did an amazing job. Your response from the time that I know I called, literally, I was still on the phone with the operator, and your guys were on scene. So that, to me, was amazing, and the thoroughness that went on in that, in the courtyard was amazing. So where I am frustrated is not with the response of the Hoboken Police Department. I think you guys are doing, we're, we're doing an amazing job last night and did an amazing job in handling that situation. I just feel that now, as the housing authority, we need to do more to prevent these things from happening. So that was just, I, I just wanted to let you know that.
Yeah, and we're committed to helping make sure that these events don't happen anymore. I appreciate the the kudos on, on the response, and that was a team effort last night. We, we used some shared services between us and transit, I believe, and, and the county. We had requested them to come down, and they, they did assist. Again, detectives and our patrol worked together, and, you know, they tried to get to the situation as safe as possible for our residents. We thought we had a few actors on scene. That, that's why there was, I believe, some emergency services unit from our New Jersey Transit Partners, and they conducted a few sweeps of, of the buildings to make sure that the actors still weren't there. We were hoping to make some arrests last night, but that just didn't seem to come to fruition. But the investigation is ongoing. We're hoping to have arrests sometime soon.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I, I will, I will, because I know a lot of things are sensitive, and, and you don't want to touch on it. The only question I would have is after this, after the first couple of shots that were fired a couple of months ago, was the same amount of police brought into the housing authority than it was tonight?
So we had doubled our enforcement that was down there, or, or deployment, rather, and we did that again last night, and we actually added more on the overnight than we did the last time.
Right. So when the, when the officers are, because when the officers are stationed inside the, their vehicle, and they're just sitting in the vehicle, is that considered on-site patrol?
It depends, because what we do have now is at least two officers are walking through the, the main courtyard area. They're detailed between third to fourth on Jackson and on Harrison, and to, and they're posted to be able to walk around and, and communicate and, and speak with all residents and mingle in like we have with our Project Rocket. But they're also there for enforcement as well, and then we have an additional units that, that do drive through the area. Sometimes they park, so they're not just driving in circles the whole time, but they are, they do get pulled away for other jobs as well, but their main priority is to be in that housing area. So sometimes.
So when I, yeah, so when I drive, so when any of us drive by, you're saying we shouldn't be seeing two officers sitting in a vehicle, right?
No, you might, you, you might see them there. So there, there should be people walking. There should be officers walking. And I, I literally just came from housing right now. That, that's where I was when, when you sent me that email. So we have officers walking around, and you, you may see officers walking around, but you may see officers either driving, or sometimes they position a car and sit for a little bit, posted up, making sure that double parkers aren't, aren't gathering, and groups aren't gathering. And then they'll go from there, either respond to other jobs outside of the, the housing area, but their, their main focus is to be in the housing area. So at some point, you may see two officers sitting in a car, because we want them to be in the housing area.
I think, can I, can I just add to that? And I wish we would have had our meeting earlier, because there, there were issues that, that I did want to bring up in reference to that. So when you're saying that there's two officers in a vehicle, I, I get it. They're in the vehicle, but when they're on Jackson Street, by where the Saints are, where nothing is really happening, and not on Harrison Street, how could, how is that helping the situation? I think that that's one of the things, and I'm telling you this as a resident, this is what I'm seeing, because I go downstairs every day to pick up my children from the Boys and Girls Club, that leaves the kids by the West Side Plaza, so I do see the officers in the vehicle. But I think that our target and our issues are having, are really happening on Harrison Street, not on Jackson Street. You're also stated that they're supposed to be walking around in the courtyard and so forth. I do see them. I've seen them walk around on Jackson Street. I, I honestly, in my, from what I've seen personally, I don't see them much in the courtyard, walking through the courtyard. I also don't see them, and I think I voiced this to, to some of the commissioners that I've had communication with, and I believe also to the director, is that I don't see them doing much of the community policing. They're not speaking with the residents. Like, if they're walking through, if they're walking, they're just walking. They're not trying to, to, to speak to the residents, even a hello, just a hello, every day will probably eventually lead up to a conversation, because now you're like, oh, hey, hi, how are you? How are you today? So I think that that's something that also maybe we need to work on with the community policing aspect of it, but because of what happened last night, I do feel that on Third and Jackson is not where we're having the issues. The issues that we're having are obviously on Harrison Street. Between Third and, I want to say Second. So I think that that's something that needs to be addressed. And Mr. Reco, you would probably know more, because you see the cameras, and I'm sure you can target the areas, but if I'm wrong, please correct me if the issues are not on Harrison and somewhere else.
Well, I, I think, Commissioner, that, that they're in both areas, and I think the increased standing over at Jackson and Third has helped there. But I, but I, I think we've talked in the Superior Committee about talk, having that separate meeting with the police and talking to them about getting them to walk a little more and deal with those Third and Harrison issues as well, because we have those going on into the evenings, and we've still got some gathering over Fifth and Jackson. So, so we need to keep on it together and, and, and do that.
I also want to state that I emailed after our last Project, Project Rocket meeting. I came home, and I sent pictures of how the court, the three, three-ten Jackson, I believe, the door was wide open, wide open table put there. I mean, it, it was just like a free-for-all. Everybody can go in there. Anybody can come out. Just two days ago, I want to say two days ago, a resident from there, an older gentleman stopped me and spoke to me in the courtyard and was telling me about the situations that he sees going on in there. He says that the table that's there, he moves it. He comes out to walk his dog at three in the morning. He moves it. He puts it on the grass, and when he comes back out in the morning, it's back, put back there. Now, you're saying that your officers are walking around. They're seeing, if they're walking around, with all due respect, Captain Aguirre, they're seeing these kids hanging out at three-ten Jackson Street. Three-ten and three-twenty-one. This is an ongoing thing all the time. So why are we not trying to disperse them? Because I feel like these groups are the ones that are causing the problems, and unfortunately, because of these groups, that's why we're having these shootings.
Well, speaking about breaking up groups, again, if we're trying to build trust within the community, it's tough for the police force to just go down there and just break up a, a group of kids that are not doing anything wrong, just hanging out. So I get that they become unruly and can eventually end up doing something that's, that's not within the confines of the law, but if they're just hanging out is now kind of what we want. I mean, I know, we don't want drinking. We don't want quality of life issues, but if the kids are just hanging out in the courtyard, there's really is no legal justification to be able to say, hey, listen, you, you, you gotta move. You gotta get out of here. If the kids live there, why should they not be in the courtyard?
I think that's the problem. The majority of them don't live here.
Well, I'm sorry.
I think that's what, one of the issues is that, as a resident, I know the majority of people don't live here. Those children, they don't. I mean, if we looked up leases, they're not on a lease. They're not residents of the housing authority.
And you send these to juveniles?
No, I, I want to say they look like juveniles, but some of them are eighteen, nineteen. I mean, it, it's a whole group of, of kids. Some of them may be sixteen, seventeen. I want to say they range from sixteen to twenty.
Okay. Well, this is one of the things that we wanted to discuss with, with, with Director Reco about our enforcement as far as the, the trespassing goes. We were looking at different ways to address that, that issue, because right now, the way the law is written, and it's, it, signs are posted, and we could issue that, that summons, but once we issue that summons, they're, they're still there. We can move them out, and then just we'll, we'll move them from spot to spot. But we're, we're looking to do a a little bit of revamp of, of that, of that enforcement. That way, it actually pays off for us. We, we don't want to just keep issuing summonses, and it's not really correcting the problem, and all we, all we have is a bunch of summonses.
Captain, you have questions for us?
Captain, you have questions for you. Two questions, um.
Mr. Reyes, are you done?
I just wanted to say in reference to what Captain Aguirre said, I think what we're talking about that, I think Michael and Andrew, you can agree with me that this is why it's so important for this one strike policy that we're revising to get done, not only as soon as possible, but for what we have in place now, we need to hold these, these people accountable. Because I know that that whoever opened that door was caught on camera. There's no way, unless the camera wasn't working, there's no way. And if that person belongs here, then that resident should have received a letter.
I do want to let you know that we do have the video and we did have four people identified in the video from different amps. So that particular incident that you're talking about has been identified. And we actually, in looking at that door being opened, because it happened to be the night before.
Let's not talk too much about the live investigation though, okay?
So we identified the individual where the cease, cause this happened. So where the cease of, to the cease letters sent up.
All right, I'm, I'm really, I'm not comfortable with us proceeding.
Well, I'm not saying, but I'm not saying names. I'm just saying in general.
I know, but it's
It's part of our protocol. If, if you're caught on camera, then you should be sending. It's just a simple question. I'm not asking Frank to give me the
She's talking about policy.
The policy is you send a cease. So what good is it if we have the police here? And I'm telling them, you have people here that don't belong here and yet you have residents here that are doing it. And okay, they, they, they found the person that, that did it. And so what, what happened? And it turns out that we were the ones who dropped the ball because we didn't send the cease to the cease letter. So the police department did their job, made them move, closed the door. Let's say that happened, closed the door. But yet the person is not held responsible by the Housing Authority. Why have a policy?
And, and, and I, and I, I clearly, we clearly follow up with those cease letters. I can get with you offline on those particular cases with Frank in the morning, but I know he follows up on those. So we will.
The two questions I had, uh, Chairman, if I can.
Yes, you have the floor.
Um, Captain, were, does it make sense for two policies maybe to put in place here in the short time? Uh, I mean immediate curfew and, uh, for the courtyards there? And also, um, potentially some type of identification so that the police that are walking around could potentially ask for a, uh, you know, a card, one of your, your access cards to get in the building. And if you don't have it, then they can, they have to leave, right? They're trespassing.
So I would have to defer to some sort of legal counsel for that. I, I, I don't know what the, the legal logistics are with, with that. I, I'm, I'm going to say that off the hot, that doesn't sound, uh, very constitutional.
What about, what about the, uh?
Well, let me comment on that. The, the area that we're talking about is our private property. It is not public property. It is not a park. Other people are not permitted to be there if we decide as a matter of our policy to say that only our tenants can be there. Then the question becomes how do we enforce that? Matthew and I have been waiting for some time for just that kind of discussion to drill down. In order to be able to facilitate enforcement, there needs to be a lot of dialogue with the police as to what they think they can do, what we think they can do, and how we need to give notice to facilitate that. And that's something that we think is very important. And it's my understanding that the director has been, uh, in the process of facilitating that dialogue. We, we still have not had it yet though.
And if we ever implemented something like that, correct me if I'm wrong, it can't be done arbitrary, in an arbitrary and capricious way.
No.
We would never let it be arbitrary and capricious. We would do it in a fashion.
Applies to a teen or somebody in their twenties is going to have to apply to somebody in their fifties or sixties.
That's correct.
Correct. So if I could just add to this conversation, right? So we've been talking about a change in the one-strike policy. We've been talking about including, uh, a civil aspect to that when it comes to property damage. We're talking about how that's, how we're going to change that and incorporate, incorporate that into our own policies, which then, uh, changes are ACOB again, if I remember correctly, which is a long drawn out process. So I understand the, the want and the need to make all those significant changes. And believe me, I like working fast. Uh, as the director knows, I'm, I'm, I'm on him all the time about this stuff. And the lawyers tell me that it just can't happen as quickly as I'd like it to happen. But those things are, are the things that are underway that, as I said earlier, we really can't do anything in the most immediate, uh, future.
What about a curfew?
So a, a curfew is a, a whole different conversation. Again, if it's a policy change, does that then have to be incorporated into the ACOB? I don't know. If it doesn't if it doesn't, can we just do that as a, as a generalized policy? Uh, and is that then enforceable? So we haven't changed our one-strike policy in 25 years. We haven't changed our memorandum of understanding with our police department in, in at least 10. So these are the things that we're looking at and we've been discussing so that the police department has more of a leg to stand on when it comes to dispersing a group of kids or someone, uh, who shouldn't be on our property. Uh, so these are all things that since, since I'm on the board only a few months now, we've been discussing and we're trying to make those changes, significant changes. It, it just doesn't happen overnight. I would love to implement a, a, a curfew. I just don't know if we have a legal standing to do that. Can we incorporate quiet hours versus a curfew? I don't know. These are all nuanced things that our attorneys have to give us some guidance on. And then we have to make sure that our memorandum of understanding with the police department is consistent with the policy we make so that they have a leg to stand on when we ask them to come down and disperse a crowd. That doesn't just change overnight. And, and just because we want it to happen, doesn't mean that it's going to happen exactly the way we think it will. So
Well, we've, we've got the attorneys on now. So the curfew, can we, can we talk about the curfew real quick? Cause it seems like this could be an immediate thing for the short term to prevent some of these crowds and some violence from happening. If people know, hey, there's a curfew in Hoboken, police are down there, they're kicking everyone out. I don't want to get a trespassing ticket or, or anything, like they're cracking down on this stuff. We shouldn't even go down there. Maybe that might prevent some of this, some of this action coming from other towns.
Yeah, I, I would defer to our attorney on it, number one. And number two, what does that do to our overall goal of incorporating our police department into the community again? So again, look guys, this is a fine line we're walking here. And I'm not saying that you're right, you're wrong. I, I mean, I, I like a lot of those ideas, Andrew. I'm just saying that remember we're walking this fine line to really get that trust of our resident back so that our resident becomes self-policing. So that when those kids from Jersey City or Union City or West New York or wherever come to our Housing Authority with, with not so great intentions, our residents are the first line of defense to say, hey, wait a minute, what are you doing here? You don't live here. We don't have that right now. We have a handful of residents that are doing that, but we don't have the buy-in of all of our residents. And that's what we're really trying to achieve. At least that's from my perspective.
So Captain, how do we, does it make, in your opinion, does a, does a curfew help you just starting there?
Well, like, uh, like Mike Russo said, it helps us in a way to be able to enforce something. But then, then we're becoming or making the, the Housing Authority a police state where we're just down there kicking people out and, and, and not having that trust factor, uh, uh, built. Because now we're just down there, let's, let's find kids who, who don't. And then how many kids are going to be down there that, that even who live down there are going to have, you know, a, a resident card? Uh, there's residents right now that don't have, you know, an access card. They lose it all the time. Is, is that going to be the proof that, that you live there? Or we have to walk everybody back, uh, uh, up to their, you know, where they say they're staying with or, or what about visitors? I, I mean, a curfew does help in the sense where it makes it just easy. Hey, listen, at this time, no one's allowed out. And if you're, but then we have to be there 24 hours a day to be able to enforce that. And then there's got to be parameters about, you know, what constitute the, the curfew? Am I not allowed to go to the store? Am I not allowed to walk on housing property to get to and from? And how lax does that become? I mean, I want to go from one end of the project to the, to the other. What, what's the legality of that? Am I going to get harassed by the police department? And then all that's going to do is create mistrust between the police department and, and the residents down there.
So Yeah, well, how do we have, this is the conversation that we want to have, right? And we need to have it immediately offline here. So what, what, do you suggest, does it make sense to get the, the mayor or, or someone from the mayor's office involved here to potentially bring in more resources and more attention? Um, and, and have this, have a meeting tomorrow? Um, how do we go about doing that? What, you know, we need immediate attention. I know the things that Councilman Russo is talking about, we are working on and it does take time. But I feel like there are steps that other communities go through that we're not the first housing associates, uh, Housing Authority in America to have shots go off. So like, maybe we need to look at other places and what are they doing? What did they do? What worked? What didn't work? Um, attorneys need to be involved, council people, us, um, Director Reco, other housing authorities. Like we need as many hands on deck, cause this is, this is crucial. And I, I know all of us believe that. And we heard from Barbara as a resident, this is a matter of life and death. At any moment, something can happen that's going to change everything forever. And we're trying to get it to a point where we're talking about it non-stop that, that things happen immediately. And I think that's, in my opinion, that's what was missing after, that didn't hit until I brought it up. And now that we're having this conversation, I appreciate it. It needs to continue this, this vertical upward of more people, more hands on and, and now so that we, we get serious items done by tomorrow night so that we're, we're running with this thing and, and our, our residents are safe. Cause
I'll tell you what, I, I, I agree with your assessment. You, you, yeah, I think you hit the nail right on the head. Where else has this happened? What changes did they make? What, and how, how did that impact their resident, uh, housing authorities? Because we can keep trying stuff and throwing stuff at the wall and see what sticks. But why not discuss it with somebody who's done it and has gone through this and has some su- uh, success? And then we can try those, uh, solutions.
Can we, can we, can we get like the Jersey, I'm, Jersey City's right there and I'm, you know, they, they got some rough, rough neighborhoods.
I know they have some chimneys in there.
Yeah, let's get them on the horn. Let's, let's have a, you know, Barbara, maybe we get theirs. We call them up and get their director of, uh, housing on the line and, and pick their brains. Maybe we do ours, all of us do some legwork here and Google where this has happened in other places and, and, and call those people up. Let's get them on the line. This, 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 we need this. We need all the, the attention and res- we can't just go, well, let's hit the subcommittee and let's, let's, let's wait for the policies to take place.
You, you're a part of that subcommittee, aren't you?
I know, I know. You took me off as being the, uh, chair of it. I, I get it.
I, I think Councilman Russo did a good job as chair.
You know, we need, this is what we, we all, we all have to do. Uh, it, it can't just be the three on the subcommittee. This requires everyone's attention, everyone's resources, every, we, we have a, you know, um, Councilwoman Jabor is fantastic with a mom's, uh, demand action. She's like a, a national leader. Let's get her on the line, right? Let's, she would be more than happy to, to, to share her knowledge of the subject matter. Like what, she'll know what they're doing in other communities. Let's get her on a committee meeting called tomorrow.
I know what they're doing. I speak with them and people in Jersey City. It is, um, so
All right, so then, so then give us
We have committees because there's laws about gatherings of
It's not an overnight process, but I
We can't, we can't have a non-notice meeting of the full board. That's why the committee system exists.
No, of course, of course.
But you can have a gathering of as many members of a board or a city council or whatever it might be without violating the open public meeting.
Okay, got it. What's the actual item?
It's, it's
What are we doing tomorrow?
Chairman, may I say something after, please?
Yeah. Well, what are we doing tomorrow? That involves the Hoboken Police Department, the mayor's office, the city council and neighboring communities? What are we doing tomorrow to, to try to get some light on this and, and some answers?
I, I think the Security Committee should take the ball and run with this. And you as a member of it, I think you should share with your fellow committee members who can meet every day without a, a notice because you're not a quorum. And you should run with this as you
Not good enough. Not good enough. Every single commissioner tonight.
Wait, wait, wait.
Every single commissioner should go, should send an email tomorrow with their idea.
Erica has the floor. Please let her speak.
Erica
Every single commissioner should come up with ideas and mail them tomorrow.
Commissioner Seitzman has the floor.
So Commissioner Empesado is correct. I understand the need for action and the frustration and nobody wants a problem. But how does this, so why doesn't we, what are the legal laws about? Can we all communicate via email if people have suggestions?
Send them the Director Reco. Send them all the Director Reco.
So we can communicate to
Let me answer the legal question first. You can communicate by any means. But if four commissioners are communicating, we need to give notice of a meeting and that would include email.
Okay, thank you. So is it possible to have come up with ideas and solutions? Feed them to Director Reco and then have Director Reco send an email, communicate back. Or if two committees, this still is like a Resident Services and a Securities Committee. Barbara, I'm sorry, Barbara, I'm giving you homework, is on both committees. If we're able to, because those committees work so closely together and these items are so closely together, if those
But I have, I have to cut you off, and I'm sure Councilman Russo will, will support me in this. Unfortunately, you cannot have two committees working on parallel tracks on the same issue because then it's, it's basically, it's, it's a quorum violation.
No, no, not together. Meeting separate.
I, I just
But if you're working on the same issue and, and with the same agenda, it's, it's not separate.
Can I ask the question?
Yes, Councilman Russo, you have the floor.
Of all the commissioners, right? Andrew, I love your idea that every, every commissioner should come up with ideas. But what is the realistic suggestion that will change for tomorrow? That you in your head have already? Cause you've said it like
You want me to give you, you want me to give you the answer?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Soon as this call is done, every commissioner goes online and Googles shootings in housing authorities, right? Between all of us, we're going to come up with at least three different communities that have dealt with the shooting problem in this country and how they de- and how they dealt with it. And if all of us are doing it, if I do it, I might not come up with one. Me and you do it, we might come up with one. If all, all of us are dedicating the time to do it, we might come up with five different communities and five great ideas to, to have a call. Our security subcommittee can have a call with and discuss those ideas with the chief of police, with the mayor's office and people that are, are influencers in our community. That's it.
Am I agree with that?
That's, that's the answer. That's all I want. That's all I want. I want, I want James Sanford. I want Aaron. I want everybody. We all need to do it.
But that doesn't make the change that you're looking for by tomorrow. That continues down the same road that we're already continuing down. And there may be other things that we should be doing. I don't disagree with that. All I'm saying is that there is nothing, at least I didn't hear anything here tonight, that is going to be a significant change that we could implement right now so that tomorrow night Captain Aguirre and his men could do what we need them to do.
It potentially, we could potentially put in, we could potentially put in a curfew and cite five examples across the country of how they did it. And by tomorrow night, institute that curfew according to the examples that we cite and what worked and what didn't work. And boom, we have, we have change. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I love your optimi- I love your optimism.
Why not just, why, 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 why be against it? Why not just say yes?
I'm, I'm not against it. You know what? It's not
I want to set expectations, Andrew, because I've done, I've done this for, for quite some time. And I never want to leave a meeting that my residents, whether it's here at the Housing Authority or anywhere else, miss hear what's being said. I don't want a resident to, to come off this call tonight. miss hear what's being said. I don't want a resident to, to come off this call tonight. And say, you know what? Commissioner Empastado said to me by tomorrow night, we're going to have a curfew and everything's going to be good. When in reality, we all know that that's not going to happen.
Right. I, I.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree with your strategy. I think it's great. I think we should all, all, all hands on deck, so to speak.
So let's do it.
Can I, can I make a comment, folks?
Yes, please. You have the floor, counselor.
At our August meeting, we adopted a resolution. Authorizing the closure of the Harrison Gardens courtyard during certain hours. I hesitate to use the word curfew because I think it's a bit pejorative. But it was a carefully drafted resolution to authorize that. Based upon the fact that we needed to put several steps in place in order to be able to enforce it. So first of all, right now, we do have a closure of the courtyard. Based upon a resolution of your board.
Yeah.
From the period of nine PM to six AM prevailing time.
So, so what's been going on with that?
Nothing.
Well, from our end, the main thing is that in order to be able to do it effectively, we need the cooperation of many other folks, including the police. And as I said, I don't know, half an hour ago now, um, we need to have that meeting. So if somebody wanted to do something tomorrow, the answer is, could we get a meeting with the police to see what they'd be prepared to enforce and what signage they'd need?
Correct.
Well, what about, hold on, hold on one second because you, you, you're, you're speaking about housing, uh, property policy. So that doesn't constitute city ordinance or, or state law. So what would be the, the, the penalty for, for breaking that, that curfew?
Well, that's all what we'd have to talk with the, the police about. Uh, my first question for the police would be, what would be the penalty if somebody were on our property and, uh, they were trespassing?
Yeah, but trespassing is a, is a, is a state statute.
Right, but there's, there's no question that if we don't authorize people to be on our property, let's start with people who don't live there. Um, if we get the cooperation, the police, they could be given a summons, yes.
Well, if they don't live there, you have trespassing. What about curfew for people who do live there?
Well, that's one thing we were working on in terms of how that would work, whether or not they can, uh, be instructed as part of the policy to use the other entrance to their property.
And then do you, how does that correlate with visitors? So if.
Understood. That's another issue. I agree with that. We, we have identified a lot of those issues and we've been waiting to get back on a lot of this. We also have to address the question of what the signage might look like.
So here's, here's Commissioner Empastado's frustration. Right here.
Yes, correct. Yeah, I'm about to go nuts.
And, and I'm going nuts for you in a more calm way. So calm down. So here's the frustration and it's frustration probably for every commissioner and, and, and the administration. It doesn't move fast enough. Okay? And, and believe me, I, I understand that we can't change it overnight, but it doesn't move fast enough. We've had this conversation now for at least two months. And we don't have, we, we haven't been able to have that conversation with the police department as to what the trespassing side of it would look like. But on our end, we haven't been able to implement the policy yet so that we could enforce a, a letter to, uh, a notice to cease, to, uh, cease, right? Uh, which would then.
Well, a notice to cease would be with respect to a tenant. Keep that in mind.
Correct, that's what I'm talking about.
I'm suggesting that a big portion of this, I, I listened to people like Commissioner Reyes. A big portion of this may be non-tenants, easily identifiable non-tenants.
Well, but easily identifiable to Commissioner Reyes. Not easily identifiable, identifiable to patrolmen X.
Right, understand, absolutely. Absolutely. And that's one of the reasons why we have to have the dialogue with the police to see how we can find a way to help them implement.
Identifiable to the police because in our first security meeting, Mr. Merchant provided the police department along with the security. Um, with the security committee, a list of every tenant with their household members. So they can, if you're stopping someone and they're saying to that person, um, they can prove that they live here, then yes, there is a way for that police department at any time to go to that Excel spreadsheet. And say, I mean, obviously they would probably have to call headquarters to, to verify it, but there is a way that they can verify they're a tenant.
Okay, but there's also, I mean.
It takes a little bit more time.
Correct me if I'm wrong. There are not a lot of civil liberties issues with just.
Absolutely. I know exactly where you're going. It, it, so we, we only have certain legal justifications to make certain stops. And when we start compelling identification, that ups the ante for what a mere inquiry is. I could ask somebody, hey, do you live here? And they can go tell me to go scratch and I don't have a legal justification. They either make that stop or compel any type of identification. Otherwise that, that I, I in turn have taken their freedoms away. When I say now you can't leave, now you have to give me ID. What's that?
You have residents calling and complaining saying you have a group of individuals that are hanging out in the area. They don't live here. For instance, I call, I call all the time. They don't live here. They need to come. Can you come and disperse them because they're either holding the doors open, they're smoking in the hall? They're doing stuff in the hallway, then that just, just, just does justify you asking them, are you a resident of?
Granted, but that's not going to, that only will happen when there's an actual complaint. So officers just hanging out in the courtyard, waiting for that complaint to come in, doesn't really is, i- it's just not going to happen. I, I don't see that, that the constant complaint coming from the residents outside of you, Barbara, I'm sorry. I know you're, you're very vigilant down there and, and you do it, but you, you can't do it by yourself. You know what I'm saying? So that's where that whole trust comes in with our project rocket. We said, we, we need people to self-police and then we would need that complaint to come in. And I, cops can't just start arbitrarily walking up to any resident that they just don't happen to recognize and say, hey, you live here? Give me your ID. Let me, you don't have ID? And there's no real reason for them to give it to you unless it was an actual complaint. And it has to be something that rises to the level to warrant that stop.
So we, we, the, the shooting, the shootings happened last night in, uh, in Harrison Gardens?
Yeah, right outside of, uh, three, three twenty-one?
So we, we, so at the last meeting, at the last meeting, we put in a policy to close down Harrison Gardens. We, we say we're going to put up signs, right? And we say we're going to.
It was, it was two meetings ago, Andrew, just.
Two meetings.
To be clear, it was the August meeting, yes.
So in August, this happens after another shooting. We decide as a, as a group to close down Harrison Gardens. That's going to help. We make the good decision. We have no execution. We don't put up any signs. We don't have any meetings, right? And, and now the shooting happens in, in the same spot that was supposed to be closed. I understand, everyone understands how frustrating that is. But why can't we put up signs like right now? That say, even if it just says Harrison Gardens is closed between the hours of ten PM and six AM. That's it. And just.
Well, Andrew, I, Andrew, I think you've answered the question by listening to the police officer. The putting up of the sign will not achieve anything unless we have an enforcement mechanism.
I, I understand, but, but why don't, why isn't the first step? Why isn't the first step put the sign up?
Yes, but I guarantee you that the police are going to want input into what that sign says.
Harrison Gardens is closed between seven PM and six AM. That's it. That's it.
That's not going to give the police any capability to enforce anything.
No, no, I understand.
I think what he's getting, uh, counselor, I think what he's getting at is it doesn't have to be an enforcement component just yet. Just have the signs up just to see if that makes a difference.
Yeah, okay, well, I, I, I understand what he's getting at and if that's what you want to do, we can do that.
I'll go to CVS right now and with a magic marker, put the damn sign up. Like, if I walk into a, if I walk up to a basketball gym, right? And it says the gym is closed between the hours of ten PM and six AM and the door is open. I'm not going inside the gym. Right?
Put the signs up.
All right, so wait, no, no, guys, guys, all right. So Councilman Russo, can we get, can we get the committee to give some direction to the director to get those signs up ASAP?
Chairman, I'm sorry, but I, last I knew, I was the, the chair of the.
Okay, I forgot.
By no means am I taking anything away from, from, from Mr. Russo because he has been helping me through this because I am fairly new to it.
Father, take it all, please. Take it all.
You know what? I had so many excellent candidates. That's why, um, Commissioner Empastado should not get bent out of shape that he's not the chair because I mean, you're all so awesome. So I need you guys to meet. Can you meet tomorrow?
I have a problem with meeting. I asked for a meeting prior to this. Unfortunately, the police was not available, um, the date that it was, that it was, um, it was scheduled for. Um, and then I.
Can we, can we meet right after this? Can, can Captain, let's get on the call right after this. I don't know what your schedule is.
Again, I don't, I don't want to take away from what the police is doing. I know that they're working diligently on what they're working on. And I did see them down here tonight. But can you, um, Captain Aguilar, maybe tomorrow get, um, let the director know when you guys would be available to meet ASAP? Like I'm available, I can meet. We can meet, we meet remotely. We don't have to meet anywhere, um, you know, in person. I don't know, um, director, how your availability may be or.
Right. I'm available. And, uh, I, I think I'd hold my comments to that meeting because there's a lot to go over. As you folks though, we've been, uh, attempting to get that meeting together with, uh, Captain Jacob Belli and, and the, uh, and, and the chief. And we've had some issues as like last week, trying to get that discussion together. And if there's an impetus to get that, uh, together tomorrow, um, you know, I'm certainly available, um, really anytime after, um, about three, two o'clock.
So would you folks be available? I, I, I don't want to assume that the police, after they've investigated this. Yeah, just understand, they've been investigating this through the night. Okay, so let's, let's be.
Yeah, can we, can we just?
And I also, what I don't want to happen is have a meeting where we end up with nothing again, because then that's just a waste. I'm sorry, the truth is that it would be a waste. So I want to know if we met, what, what are the goals to that meeting? What are we going to do at that meeting? And also, when would it be okay for the police department to be available? Because I know you guys have short staff, you know, all that stuff that's going on. I mean.
I, I'm definitely available tomorrow. I can't speak for Captain Jacob Belli or the chief. Uh, I would have them included in any invitation and if they can make it, they make it. Uh, but I know I'm definitely available tomorrow. Uh, I don't know what we're going to accomplish or what we're going to, uh, discuss, uh, so I can be better prepared. But, um, I'm definitely available tomorrow and I, I can relay that to the chief and, and.
I think that's not sufficient to get something going for tomorrow. Okay, we have the chair of the committee.
I'm, I'm, I'm actually looking at my schedule right now. I'm trying to figure out what that looks like. Uh, and what could be moved.
While, while, while he looks at that, i- is it possible that we just come up with an agreement that Director Reco prints signs tomorrow and puts them up? Like what, what are we talking about here?
I would like the opportunity to draft the sign to reflect the resolution. Um, and in accordance with what was discussed before, including what the, um, officer pointed out. We're in a situation here where it's simply a statement sign. And.
Yeah, I, I think.
That can easily be prepared. I could get that to people. If you're going to have a meeting at two or three o'clock, I could get the draft of that to you by the time of that meeting.
Perfect.
May I just also make another suggestion then? If, if you're going to create signs just to see, and hopefully that just the signage itself makes a difference, wh- why not put out some sort of mailer and other advertisements maybe or uh, to all residents. That way they, they can pass that message along for those who are not reading the sign.
Yeah, was the nixle ever sent out that we voted to close Harrison Gardens between certain hours?
Well, of course it wasn't appropriate to send out a nixle since we didn't even have the agreement on the wording of the sign or the agreement with the police. So um, you know, we, we wouldn't send out a nixle just on a board vote. Um.
I think this can all be hammered out during your meeting tomorrow. So what?
Well, this sign, I'll point out to you, Mark, is not one that needs the police's approval. Because as the officer pointed out, it's simply a statement of what our policy is. What would happen if somebody violates it is Andrew's point that the door is open and you could go in, but you probably won't. And then after that, we have to think about what we do next.
The guy had a gun and shot a new, another human being. You think he's going to worry about a sign?
I know it's the.
Andrew wouldn't go in, but that guy, he's going in.
Right.
Michael, Michael, come on.
I think, I think the point is we don't need to have the signs printed between now and two o'clock tomorrow. All right. So I think you are a very capable.
The statements are so bizarre tonight, man.
No, Andrew, it's not. My statement wasn't about you. It was about the fact that.
You really think that I, you really think that I think that someone's not going to shoot someone because the sign's up?
Aggressing at this point. This is regressing at this point. I'm very glad that there's going to be a meeting tomorrow of this committee. Full of our.
We decide a time, guys?
Two o'clock.
What time?
I'm sorry. What time?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock? I can't. I'm, I'm at work and outside event tomorrow, food distribution in Somerset. So I don't think I'll actually be back in town till after three.
Okay, what about three?
I could do four thirty to five or I could do six and on.
Would have to be six and on. I have a four o'clock tomorrow. So six and on.
Six o'clock tomorrow for your committee, okay?
Does that work for you?
Can you do that? Are you off duty at that?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good to go for six o'clock. And like I said, I'll, I'll relay the message to the chief and Captain Jacob Belli, at least hopefully one of them else. Uh, can join me in on, on that, on that Zoom. It's a Zoom.
Captain, is it, is it possible to request, um, or invite the, uh, I don't know who's the prosecutor or, or Hudson County, somebody, I don't know who's in the position, the lawmakers, but can we get the prosecutor on the phone too to, you know, pick their brain?
I doubt it very, very seriously for tomorrow night.
Can we at least ask?
Plus, he doesn't have, he doesn't have, um, immediate authority or jurisdiction with respect to enforcing a sign if we did try to enforce one.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, listen. You guys are.
We'll hash it out.
Committee.
Yeah, we'll hash it out.
We're going to hash it out. All right. We're talking about.
Six o'clock tomorrow night and, uh, please include me and Matthew on your email, Mark.
Who, uh, who sends out that email?
I will. I'll send out a Zoom meeting invite.
Who, who's that? I'm sorry.
That's, uh, Executive Director Reco. He's going to send out the Zoom invite.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you. And Captain, thank you so much for coming on to the meeting. All right. And, uh,
Yes, thank you.
My apologies.
Thank you. We're working hard. Hopefully we'll, we'll be making a difference soon.
There you are. And, uh,
Absolutely.
Apologies for, uh, Captain Jacob Belli. Uh, I think I disrupted him in bed after about thirty straight hours of being up, but.
Yeah, no, he's, he's, he's been, he's been here a long time since yesterday.
He's, he's the best. All right. All right. Thank you. So motion to adjourn?
Uh, one, uh, Chairman, one quick question. Uh, Director, um, the uh, Porter Johns down at the field.
Yes, sir.
Every time there's, uh, my son's practice, they're locked. And why are they, why are they not open when?
Yeah, the city won't let them touch us. Could you bring that up with, uh?
Vinnie has access.
I just need a direction, brother. Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I also wanted to say in reference to what Mr. Russo's saying, um, Mr. Director, I received complaints, not only from residents, but also from the Head Start program that the field is being left dirty. I know, I'm not, am I right? Look at Michael shaking. So I.
Yeah, I, I drove by last night and there were bottles everywhere.
No, they sent me pictures. Actually today I'm going to send them to you. Um, you know, they take the kids there, um, during the day and there was just garbage everywhere. Um, it's happening after the, after the, um.
We have our maintenance crew over on that and, and we continue to talk to the folks that use the field through the city, et cetera. Please clean up, if, if everyone would just clean up after their game. And, and so our guy goes.
I thought the city cleaned it.
No, we cleaned it. No, we cleaned it. Now, now and then the city will send a crew. It got real, real bad at one point after their crew, after their games went on, they sent a crew. But day to day, we send our guy on.
Director, when, when the city's not using it and we're not using it and there's an outside entity using it, can we have someone just, not to clean it, but just to check it immediately thereafter? Because what I'd like to do is amend those contracts to include fines if they left, if they leave the fields uh, and and, uh, a disarray.
Yeah, we can.
To our residents, so we should give them to the people using our fields.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilman, you have, you, the ball's been properly handed off to you and you can run with it?
Oh, I already text Leo.
Good man.
That's our running back. All right. Okay, any, any other questions? All right, motion to.
Let me, let me just comment on what the Councilman Russo said. I would suggest not only adding fines, but I would also provide that if people are recidivist on that, when it comes time to award things next year, they're precluded. And we talked with Danny about the fact that we need to make changes in the R F P for that. That's something we should add.
Well, what do we do if it's the city and they, they're kind of like half with us? We can't just take it apart.
That's correct. I'm talking about the the third party people. I believe that's where the discussion was on fines.
No, no, I agree, third party people should clean up. But right now, the issue is when the city uses it afterwards, it's not being cleaned. They're the ones that have it. During the.
Well, most of the. Working on my end as well. But but I still think we, as an authority, should make sure we have somebody to just check it. So we know, well, was it the city or was it the third party or was it?
Totally. I mean, that's what we do with our community rooms to our own residents. A resident, a resident community room, and we check if they've cleaned it. So why not do that for people renting our fields?
And we can have our.
And the residents, the Resident Services Committee should be working on that R F P now so that we get started right at the beginning of the year rather than get into the year and then try to.
We're already drafting.
Put the toothpaste back into.
We're already drafting up the R F P for next year. We plan on having it out next month.
Excellent.
Cool. Motion closed.
Motion, I second the motion. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Good night, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Talk to you tomorrow.